I'd like to call it order the Harris Township Board of Supervisors February 13th, 2023, meeting for a public hearing. And to start the process, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance, and then tonight it's going to be led by the Cub Scouts of PAC 380, and the den, Peter is...
The Wolf Den.
The Wolf Den. So gentlemen, if everybody would rise and face the flag, if you gentlemen will start us out.
Captain.
My Navy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, to start tonight, we have a public hearing on Proposed Ordinance 358, adopting the updated official map. Amy, do you want to, who's going to pull that? Mark, go ahead, Mark?
On November 14th, 2022, the Board of Supervisors reviewed the proposed official map that was prepared by the Official Map Subcommittee. The Board directed staff to forward the proposed map to the CRPC, County Planning Agency, and adjacent municipalities for review, and to schedule a public hearing following the required 45-day comment period. The current official map was adopted in 2008 and includes facilities that have been completed, as well as facilities that may not be feasible or desirable in the future. The goal of the Official Map Subcommittee was to prepare an official map that did not constitute a wish list of potential facilities, but rather a map that would be feasible to implement. The Subcommittee solicited feedback from the public utilizing several online tools during the spring and summer of 2022, and utilized responses to prepare a proposed official map. The proposed official map, which is included in the agenda, primarily includes pedestrian and bicycle facilities to improve connectivity throughout the township and beyond. Two parks from the existing official map were retained. The map also includes two areas along Bowle Avenue for pedestrian improvements, and two potential public parking lots in the village. Unlike the current official map, the proposed map includes a comprehensive legend for each facility shown. Both the Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Committee reviewed the proposed official map during the fall of 2022 and recommended approval. Responses from the CRPC and Center County Planning and Community Development Department are included in the agenda. Based on the comments from the CCPCDO, which is the County Planning Department, staff made a minor numerical correction to the map. No comments were provided by any adjacent municipalities.
Okay, at this time, anybody that wants to comment or make any statements on this proposed ordinance may step to the microphone, announce your name, and let us know anything you want to hear.
Are you interested?
I don't know. Anybody else? Nobody wants to hear, okay?
I move to adjourn.
I have a motion to move adjourn. I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Aye.
Thank you, Bruce.
Oh yeah, Bruce.
That aye came from Australia, in case you're... Okay, we're going to call it order the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors, February 13th, 2023. First on the agenda is approval of the minutes for January the 3rd. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So, sorry.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second?
I have one discussion.
Okay, that's my next question. Any comments, changes, additions? Go ahead.
I, on my comments last time, Finance Committee, Mr. Graham said that the committee did not meet, and that was in error. They did meet.
Oh, okay.
So it just occurred. It doesn't change the minutes. I probably did say they didn't meet.
Okay, but they did meet, but you just didn't, okay. I'll just cross the not up. Any other comments, changes, additions? Hearing none. I will accept the, or all those in favor signify by saying aye with the change?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. This is a section of the meeting where any citizen may make comments on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Please be limit yourself to five minutes per person, and anybody that wants to make a citizen's comment may step to the microphone at this time. Please give us your name and what you're doing.
I think we have one.
Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name's Raymond Buzolsky, and my wife and I reside in the Kaywood Development, close to the intersection of Montclair and Catherine Streets. And previously, I'd brought to the attention of Amy Parkes and some supervisors, the need for a four-way stop sign at Montclair and Catherine Streets. The year was 2007, by the way. It's a while back. I had collected 80 names of Kaywood residents who supported the installation of the four-way stop at the intersection, and I was informed that before any action could be taken, a traffic study had to be conducted. So subsequently, the result of the study was that it did not, the four-way stop did not meet PennDOT's criteria. Amy informed me that according to PennDOT, at least 200 vehicles must pass through the intersection daily in order to justify a four-way stop. Well, fast forward to today. We now have 40 new family homes, which were recently built in the Kaywood North Development, and all vehicles from those homes pass through the intersection of Montclair and Catherine Streets. In addition to that, there are 37 previously established homes, which also have vehicles that use that intersection. So currently, there are vehicles from 77 homes passing through the intersection. Now, I've observed, as I walk through the part of the development, that each one of those homes has at least two vehicles, and a few have three or more. So, if a single car from each home leaving and re-entering the development on a daily basis comes in and out of the development, minimally, there'd be about 154 vehicles going through that intersection. Now, add a second or third vehicle, plus commercial vehicles, and I feel confident in saying that the 200-vehicle threshold would be met for a four-way stop, based on what I'd heard in 2007. Now, I'm sure you've all heard the adage, "If you see something, say something." Well, with the advent of warmer weather in the horizon, and the dynamics of our development changing over to more young families with children, I believe there's a real danger exists at the Montclair-Catherine intersection. Now, I've personally witnessed young children riding Hot Wheel tricycles, and kids riding scooters and bikes come down the hill on Montclair heading towards the park. Unfortunately, many of them disregard the stop sign, and they speed right through it. I've also witnessed drivers run both stop signs currently there. To make matters worse, vehicles coming from Kaywood North have to contend with a lilac tree that is right at the corner, and that certainly impedes their vision, creates a blind spot, especially for the stop sign runners. Now, having witnessed some incidences which I've brought to your attention, I once again feel the need for a four-way stop sign at Montclair and Catherine Streets. I would be remiss in not doing so, especially if an unfortunate incident occurred whereby a child would be injured or lose their life. Being proactive in this matter, rather than reactive, could very well save a child from injury and a driver from being involved in a tragic accident. So in closing, I'd like to point out that my wife and I have lived in our residence for 30 years. Our children have grown up, and they're living elsewhere. However, we are both retired educators, and have always been advocates for maintaining the health, safety, and welfare of all children. So subsequently, I felt obligated to bring this issue to your attention for your consideration, and you can do, make whatever decision you feel, but at least I've done my part by bringing it to your attention. Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Does any of my colleagues have any comments they would like to make on that?
Just, it's, there's Kay, Karen Catherine. Catherine is the...
Catherine.
It's Kay, Karen Catherine.
Yeah. So you're coming down the hill, okay, and hitting that intersection, and there's a lot of kids coming from up there, and even over from Rocky Ridge down to the park, which is located at the very dead end at the bottom of Carmel. So there's a lot of kids, there's no walks, people are walking dogs, kids are coming down here. I mean, and there's, there's a lot of cars going through there, believe me, I've witnessed it. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
What's our process?
Make whatever decision you decide.
What's our process?
Can we ask Rob Wass to do another count?
Well, let me give you a little update on this. So, and Rob isn't, Rob's in the back somewhere, our traffic engineer. We were approached, again, and this is probably the hot button intersection in Kaywood, and we were approached by Millie Norbloom and some other residents, and we looked at that intersection. It doesn't, PennDOT has very strict warrants for when you can put up a four-way stop sign. And unfortunately, they're not proactive warrants, they're reactive, right? So it's based on accidents, it's based on cars, that number of cars, that kind of thing. So we actually did some research, and I don't know if you've noticed, we put up warning signs, stop ahead, school bus stop ahead, because the research that Rob and I, Rob had pointed me to, shows that this actually helps at those intersections. But right now, and Rob, maybe if you want to come up and explain, that intersection does not, is not anywhere close to meeting a warrant, and if we put up a four-way stop there, the township's actually liable if somebody gets a ticket or is, gets in an accident because of the four-way stop, because it's not warranted.
But what happens if there is an accident without the four-way stop? Then who's liable?
So are traffic engineers behind you?
Okay.
All right, hop to it.
Well, Rob Wass with McCormick Taylor, we work with the township. What happens is somebody could be seriously injured or killed. And unfortunately, when we addressed this in 2007, we did notice people going through the intersection, missing the stop signs that were there. We didn't feel that adding more stop signs was the answer at that point. Fast forward another 15 years, we've been through a pandemic, there's undoubtedly more people, maybe walking out there. There definitely are more people living out there as a result of the, the new homes that have been, been built out there. The data that we were working off of, traffic-wise, is likely that old, and could be updated if you wish to have a review of that information. PennDOT does give, I think, a lot of flexibility to townships to, to make some of these decisions on their own. They still have their guidelines, and when push comes to shove, and you need to go and give a deposition about something that happens on the road like that, they're going to point you to the regulations, and the regulations are what Amy said, they're restrictive, and they are somewhat reactive. But there have been places near schools, places like that, near parks, where a four-way stop could be appropriate. It sounds to me, just reading what, what your resident had to say, and that the situation may have changed since the last time we looked at it. So I remember looking at it back in 2007, when Kaywood North was, was a part of the picture.
Did you update that traffic study from Kaywood North back in 15 or 16, maybe? Maybe 17. I know it's newer, because when they redid Kaywood North, the plan, we did renew that. But we can certainly, if the supervisors want, we can certainly have Rob look at the counts again. The lilac tree, we do stay on top of. I send a letter probably once a year to that homeowner asking them.
There's a new homeowner now, so maybe I'll take him care of.
Yeah, we do send a letter and asking them, and we'll cut it back for them if they don't want to do it themselves. So we do try to stay on top of that, because we know that is a concern. But if the supervisors want, we can certainly have the traffic study redone out there.
Well, I think that, you know, we have approved, you know, development out there, and there are new houses going in there, that have gone in there.
And we have another 12 going in.
Yeah, we have another 12 going in there. So I would say, yeah, we should probably redo it.
The question I have is, is by making that four-way, that make it safer or less safer intersection?
I'd want to see what the latest information is before I say that. There are a couple different options talked about there in the study. Number one was improving the sight distance by keeping the vegetation cut back, so that people can actually see around the corners. That's number one. Number two is, are the stop signs on the, the correct approach? What PennDOT wants to see is efficiency with intersections like this, so you're not impeding the stronger direction of traffic. If that has changed, maybe flipping the stop signs from one set of approaches to the other set of approaches would cause them to be better seen and better regarded. And then from there, you can, you can go to a four-way stop. Again, I want to look at it and see, see what we can see, to see if it's justified. Those...
I think we should look at it and see.
In fact, that would improve the intersection. If it does, we certainly would like to do that.
Yeah, I think we need to have an update before we can make any kind of decision.
The only thing is, we don't want to create a, and I don't see how it would create a worse intersection. I don't think that it would, but it would be interesting to be able to justify that.
Can you give us an estimate of trips per day from each resident? Does that include, is there mail delivery?
Yeah.
You got mail delivery, mailboxes?
Yes.
Do they get included? Do mail trucks get included in that?
They would be included.
All commercial vehicles or...
In general, in a residential neighborhood, about 10 trips per day, per home.
Per home?
That's pre-pandemic. We're kind of recalibrating post-pandemic, but somewhere eight to 10 on average per home is, is a good daily estimate. Now, not every home goes through that intersection. Many of them do. Obviously, if you have a neighbor who's taking an interest and keeping an eye on the intersection, yeah.
Well, I think we just want to make sure we're not creating a problem.
Agreed.
All right.
Agreed.
Did you have a question, sir?
Wouldn't it, like, make it worse to upgrade, to make things better, like, to construct it, or make the intersection worse?
You mean that, more construction? Additional construction?
No, just like construction for the stop signs, and then like, it would probably block up, like, it would probably block up, like, I don't know, like, a couple, like, a couple, like, up, like, the part of the street, and then, like, it would make the intersection worse.
Well, that's something we'll have our engineer look at, and he will come back to us and let us know that...
You're right. When people drive, you want all the cars to be able to see all the other cars, and all the cars to be able to see all the other people. So you want to try to keep things away that would keep their sight from being blocked. That's what you're trying to say, right?
Yeah, like, the construction's being done, then, like, then, like, it's blocking the people who are trying to get through the intersection, so they have to, like, make traffic worse to finish.
Yeah, construction can make things a lot worse, but the goal is to improve it in the end, right? Excellent.
He will answer your question.
I am, I am, I was a Wolf Den leader last year, so I understand these guys. They're on their, they're on the right path. Good to see you guys here tonight, too. Thank you.
All right, let's move on after that. And any other citizens' comments?
Do we need to take some...
We've already taken...
We're ready.
So hearing none, we're going to move on to new agenda items. At this point in the thing, any of the supervisors can add agenda items that are not on the agenda, or move things around. Anybody have any changes they want to do?
Sure.
Okay, hearing...
I want anything to add to the agenda.
Okay, hearing one, we're going to move on to township business. First on the agenda is recognition of first responders at the Center Estates Fire.
So on January 14th, 2023, the Bullsburg Fire Company, Alpha Fire Company, State College Police, Center Hall Fire Company, and Center Lifelink responded to a structure fire with entrapment at Center Estates on Jack's Mills Drive. The first responders worked cooperatively to extricate the resident from the apartment and to extinguish the fire. A bystander, Mr. Matt Myers, who also stopped to assist with the fire. Mr. Myers is a driver for Heller Gas and an assistant fire chief for the Mifflint Town Fire Company. He saw the activity from Route 322 and pulled into the lower end of Jack's Mills Drive. He jumped right into the scene, laying hose lines, moving ladders, and doing anything he could to assist the crews on scene. So tonight, we are very fortunate to have our first responders here, and Mr. Myers, and I'm so happy I got to shake his hand before the meeting, so that we can thank them for their efforts to save the life of this resident. So I know that Chief Winter is here, and he's going to actually read some of the details from the call, and then Chairman Harden is actually going to read the proclamations we have prepared.
All right, thank you, everybody. Yeah, it's okay. I got a loud enough voice. My wife tells me my mouth's too loud anyhow, so. As Amy said, on January 14th, 2023, we're dispatched for a structure fire. At 14:53, we were dispatched for a structure fire at 501 Jack's Mill Apartment 6. At the time of structure fire, Alpha Fire Company was dispatched for a truck and an engine to assist us with the structure fire. At 14:57, four minutes later, Chief Three, myself, arrived on scene with heavy smoke coming from the structure and a working fire in a multifamily dwelling. At that time, then I... At that time, the 911 center advised me that they're confirming there is entrapment. At that time, another entrapment call brings another engine into the scene, but Center Hall Fire Company was dispatched for the additional engine. At 14:58, five minutes after the initial dispatch, Engine Rescue 3 arrived on scene and straight laid a hand line from the, laid a hydrant, line from the hydrant into the scene. The crews off of Engine Rescue 3 got off at the hydrant and started making entry into the building, searching for the victim in Apartment 6. At 14:59, one minute later, 14:59, PD noticed a hand out the back window of the, of the rear of the structure. It was out of Apartment 4, not Apartment 6. As that time, Engine Rescue, Engine 3 arrived on scene, they were to finish making the hydrant lay. At that time, firefighter Senatal, who heard the pleas from the woman who's standing there at the scene, he grabbed the ladder off the Engine Rescue, took it around, was going around the rear of the structure to get the ladder placed up for extrication from the second-story window. Upon arrival of the Engine 3, Chief Garrus got off the back, saw the police pointing and rushing to the back of the structure. He got off the engine and made way to the rear of the structure. Firefighter Senatal had set the ladder up, and State College Police officer came up, broke the window out, and Chief Garrus finished getting his facepiece on, went up into the Second Division, and went into the room, then, what was her bedroom, found the victim inside the, the bedroom. Firefighter Senatal followed Chief 3 up, up, 32 up the window, and was on the ladder at the, and opening the window to get her assisted to bring her out. Engine 52 arrived on scene at 15:01, and her crews, led by Rob Neese, went to the rear of the structure, and they helped extricate, help get the victim for extrication of the patient. Fire, Rob Neese climbed the ladder and backed up Robert Senatal as he's bringing, as Eric was handing the victim out the window to Senatal, and they brought her down the ladder. And at that time, at 14:50, 14, at 15:03, Truck 5 is on scene, and at that point in time, they went to, to get the roof opened up to get the smoke out of the attic area. At 15:07, which was 14 minutes after the initial dispatch, I advised that the patient was out of the structure, had been extricated, was with EMS. EMS was requesting a lifeline. So we sent Center Hall Fire Company to the Military Museum for a landing zone, but due to the nature of helicopter taking too long to arrive, the help ambulance transported her to the scene, to, from the scene to the Mount Nated Medical Center, and Engine Rescue 4 was brought to the scene to assist with overhaul, and they also provide standby for us on top of the, for us having a call, catch, or nothing. So in a 14-minute time period, we were dispatched, and we were on scene, and the patient was out, and probably, she was out the window probably a minute before I announced it, but I could see her from the distance as she showed up at the ambulance call. So, and tonight, behalf of the fire company, I want to thank everybody who participated, and that was an effort that was a group effort by all agencies on scene, and very little communications. Everyone did what they were trained to do, and by nature, did what needed to be done. Very little, very little discrepancy described by me to tell them they need to do this, they need to do that. They all did it by nature, by training. So it was a great amount of training involved in everyone doing what they needed to do, and I thank the fire companies for all their effort, making that scene, making that successful.
Okay, thank you. Could I get Alpha Fire Company representative, Center Hall Fire Company representative, Center Lifelink representative, and State College Police representative up to the microphone?
Why? That's all right, I can do that. I'm good at that.
Come on up, guys.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Okay. We got everybody? Okay. Whereas the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize the Alpha Fire Company, the Center Hall Fire Company, Center Lifelink, and the State College Police for, for their efforts at the Center Estates Fire. And whereas, on January 14th, 2023, the Bolzberg Fire Company, Alpha Fire Company, Center Hall Fire Company, Center Lifelink, and the State College Police were paged to a structure fire with entrapment. And whereas, the first responders worked cooperatively to gain entry to the apartment through the rear window. The first responders then worked to locate the resident and remove her from the apartment. And whereas, because of their efforts, the resident was extracted within 15 minutes of the call being dispatched. The residents were flown to an off-site hospital for treatment. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize the Alpha Fire Company, the Center Hall Fire Company, Center Lifelink, and the State College Police for their quick response and their actions at Center Estates Fire. We are grateful to have highly qualified and well-trained responders in our area, dated this 13th day of February, 2023. I think I have these by, you're first. I think that's the Alpha's. Check to make sure. Thank you. Congratulations, sir. And Center Hall. I think you're on the next one there. Congratulations, Ms. Chief. I think I have you on the bottom. And you, and this is Center Lifelink, which we'll make sure they get. Thank you, gentlemen. Can we have a round of applause? All right, can I get Mr. Myers up? Whereas, the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize Matt Myers for his help at the Center Estates Fire. And whereas, on January 14th, 2023, the Bolzberg Fire Company, Alpha Fire Company, Center Hall Fire Company, Center Lifelink, and the State College Police were paged to a structure fire with entrapment. And whereas, Mr. Myers, an assistant fire chief with the Mifflin Town Fire Company, and was driving a Heller Gas truck on Route 322 when he saw the fire. And whereas, Mr. Myers pulled into the lower end of Jack's Mill Drive and rushed to the scene. And whereas, Mr. Myers laid hoses, ran ladders, and provided whatever assistance he could to the first responders on the scene. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize and thank Mr. Matt Myers for rushing into an active fire scene and helping in any way he could. We are thankful that there are people like him in our world, dated this 13th day of February, 2023. Thank you, sir. Okay. Van, I need you now. How about the crew? Okay, whoever wants, whoever wants to come up. Engine Rescue Crew, Robert, Austin, Greg, you. You guys, look. You guys take your hands off your phone.
My hat on straight? All right. Yeah, you're good. All right.
All right, we got everybody? Okay. Whereas, the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize the Bolzberg Fire Company for their efforts at the Center Estates Fire. And whereas, on January 14th, 2023, the Bolzberg Fire Company, the Alpha Fire Company, Center Hall Fire Company, Center Lifelink, and the State College Police were paged to a structure fire with entrapment. And whereas, the first responders worked cooperatively to gain entry to the apartment through the rear window. The first responders then worked to locate the resident and remove her from the apartment. And whereas, because of their efforts, the resident was extracted within 15 minutes of the call being dispatched. The resident was flown to an off-site hospital for treatment. And whereas, Assistant Chief Eric Garrus, Assistant Chief Nate Frye, Captain Greg Alters, firefighter Robert Senalti, and firefighter Austin Owens were instrumental in saving the life of the resident, with Assistant Chief Garrus and firefighter Senalt making the first entry into the apartment. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Harris Township Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize the Bolzberg Fire Company for their quick response and their actions in the Center Estates Fire. We are grateful to have highly qualified and well-trained responders in our area, dated this 13th day of February, 2023. Mr. Frye?
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the next agenda item, which is to rec, oh, introduce the 2023 Bolzberg Fire Company. Van, that's you again. Ooh, cleared out.
Guys are best for that.
Yeah, yeah. The officers of the Bolzberg Fire Company, again, Chief Van Winter, I'll just have them announce themselves as they get on the line here. Assistant Chief Nate Frye.
Assistant Chief Eric Garrus.
Assistant Chief Paul Robinson.
Assistant Chief Teresa Lyon.
Safety Officer Simon Colby.
Fire Police Captain John Moore.
There's a, there's a dad died in here somewhere.
No.
No.
Okay, and I didn't believe you were going to give us an update on your...
On the fire companies.
And a report.
Yeah, you, our annual report was passed out to everybody.
Okay.
It was, kind of reflected the same reports we've had in the past. One note, I will make one of my statement that we put out there, that this year, for the first time ever, the Bolzberg Fire Company was accessible in achieving a FEMA grant. FEMA grant will go towards purchase of new air packs. That grant was 170, low over $176,000, which will help alleviate a lot of expenses out of our relief association for this, for new air packs, which are set to expire in October of 2023. Call volumes for the past year didn't change much. We were down considerable in calls. You know, it's not, not insurmountable that we're down. Everything seemed to be slow, other companies seemed to be down throughout the whole years. The amount of calls and the, and the types of calls we had were kind of in line with what they've been in the past. It really has not changed a whole lot. Mutual aids were even down. They were down considerable. We were down 12 calls in our own Harris Township area, College Township, State Status Quo, and we lost another 12 calls in mutual aid. So that respect is good. Less calls means less injuries, less fire loss, or anything like that for us.
Any, anybody have any questions for Van?
Explain what mutual aid is.
Mutual aids, when we, mutual aid or our automatic aid is both getting paged out both the same ways. If it's a certain type of call, we will be, signed with page as the company that is the main first due company for that call, which is an automatic aid, or mutual aid will be, the fact matters, they get on scene, additional piece needed or additional manpower needed or something, and they'll call for the additional apparatus or manpower to help to the scene, so we get paid on, paged out mutual aid that way. Two different ways of being, having it being done. We do mutual aids. A mutual aid basically is across, we go out of county, that's always a mutual aid, but automatic aids for neighboring fire companies to assist them as they do with us on, on structure fires and necessary calls.
Turnout time is good?
Turnout time's good. It's, 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 you know, it's always under four minutes, and that's, that's, that's a good number to keep underneath, so.
So the live-in operation is benefiting by having a shorter turnout time.
We have two live-ins permanently there. We have a third one who's in and out of there a couple days a week. So there's, there, for a while there, all three were there. So I'd show up, we get a page or something, I'd show up, and there's three of them already there and geared ready to go crawling on the apparatus. So we're out the door in a very short time period, getting out there, getting out the door, so that's a positive. I mean, that's a big benefit, having people there at the station, we're not worried about having the travel time to get there.
You knew that apparatus was working okay?
That fire at Center Estates was actually its first fire. It actually flowed water, a lot of water. We had a flu fire with it, which we didn't flow much water with it there, but that was actually its first working fire, laid from a hydrant and did everything. So it worked real well. There's a few bugs that need to work out of it, as is for all new pieces, but that'll, that too will, will we work through, and Glick, I'm sure, will get them fixed for us.
Thanks, guys.
Absolutely. Any questions?
Nope. I just would like to make a comment that, on behalf of my fellow supervisors and, and all the residents of, of Harris Township, every day, there, the day goes by, and I ain't thankful that we have the Bolzberg Fire Company, and I appreciate all you guys volunteering, and I know it takes a lot of your time, effort, and we really appreciate that. So thank you all, and keep doing, keep doing the good work.
And we thank you for everything that supervisors do and support us, and State College Police, and our mutual aid companies, Alpha Fire Company and Center Hall Fire Company, our first duty mutual aid companies, our automatic aid companies. We thank them for that, that a lot of this, these calls wouldn't happen, this is, Center Estates call is exactly one, without having that initial page coming out the door, getting extra manpower there, and it would have been, it could have been a lot worse. So we appreciate everything you do and everything they do for us also.
Any questions from the audience?
Yeah, does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to ask the fire company?
This is a chance to talk to the fire program, so. Don't get that opportunity too often, so.
Okay. All right, well, I'll go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, as we know, volunteer fire companies across the state are struggling to maintain manpower. How are we doing?
We have a staffing, we're showing manpower, roughly about 42, 43 people. That's been status quo for the last about three, four, five years. I mean, it'll go up and down, it'll fluctuate a little bit. We had 31 or 32 members make our active status this year, so, which is the highest number we've ever had, making the qualifications to, to run for offices and stuff like that. So we have members that are outside of our territory that help us, and that includes numbers, they don't make very many calls, but they're around during the day, or they're available when they're in the area, so that helps us make our manpower. That's why you see the little bit of higher number because of that, but, you know, generally, we've, we've had calls where we've had 38 people want to see, show up, which is incredible, and we're, meeting-wise, we're showing 35 to 37 a lot of times in meetings. So it's a good group of people that are working together to get things done.
And you have classification, firefighter 1, firefighter 2. How does that spread amongst all those?
There is, currently, there is, and again, you have fire police in there, so we have, I think, seven fire police that are exclusively just fire police, including into that number. We are sitting in the area of right around 22 firefighter 1, firefighter 2s, in the, in for the company, so, and we have at least two or three more I know that are, at, once they complete their essentials, they're, or have completed their essentials, once the class is back up, they're going to go back and, and go to the firefighter 1 class, so yes.
Is true, is as high as you know?
No, you can, there's, there's other classifications. You can work up higher and go through, and go further with it, and you, you take it further to become instructors and everything like this out of it.
And didn't I see the board gave... Five members working their way in, working their way through the process of certification of essentials?
Two, three, four.
Four. So we have four, four...
Four, four members that are basically...
Four probies in...
Yeah, cadet members or younger members that have just, just joined us and, and are working through the, the board, the training board to get cleared off, saying, you know, know what they're doing right in apparatus. One already has completed the essentials, the other one has the essentials already, so, and one's taking the essentials right now, so, yeah.
That's an Asian, 18 and above?
It's actually, agents, 18 and above can, can do the essentials. You can start your essentials at 16. We take numbers 16, 17. But you can, you can do your burn now, they've changed the state and require that you can do your burn by not being actually 18, so you can, because it gets the people right on that limb of where they can be in 18 and not of the, not of the date to have the burn done. So they've allowed the fourth mod to be taken by them to help get people to stay in fire service.
Okay, anybody? Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is the Bull Avenue Corridor Study.
So at the February 2022 meeting, the board approved completing a need study on the Bull Avenue Corridor. The idea behind the need study is to document needs and to identify solutions that have both Township and PennDOT support. The study would address issues noted in the small area plan and utilize some concepts included in the proposed road diet. The review would prepare scopes, concept sketches, and cost estimates that could then be used by the Township to apply for grant funding, MPO funding, and in capital planning. So in June, the board decided to include seven projects in the study, and Mr. Watts is actually here tonight, I'm not going to read the projects, because he's going to go through them one by one, but he's, he's here to give some conceptual ideas behind these projects and get some feedback from the board as we move forward. So, Rob?
Has to go up a little higher for me than the Cub Scouts. Good evening, Rob Watts with McCormick Taylor. Tonight's presentation to you is intended for, for two purposes. Number one, to give you a status of the study, where do we stand at this point, what's been completed? And then to prepare for the next step in this. We want to vet what the concepts are at this point, make sure that it's going the direction that you saw this going or wanted to see this going. We had a discussion back last year about some of the concepts, and we needed to revise our take on some of them, because our next step is to go to PennDOT and start to get their buy-in. While they had some good criticism on the previous study about the road diet, they were actually very, I'd say, bought into the ideas of adding left turn lanes, improving safety, and many of the ideas of replacing some of the infrastructure out there, like the signals that they know are reaching some of their end-of-life situation. So that's sort of the goal tonight. And by tonight, I would like to know that we are good with you to start the conversation with PennDOT with these concepts in hand, knowing that, again, we're going on the right path, that you were interested in going. So any questions on where we're, where we're headed tonight? So first of all, the study has gone through a couple different stages. We've done our data collection, gotten new traffic counts. This is the first post-pandemic traffic counts that we had conducted.
Gentlemen, could you please sign and have your conversation? Thank you. Thank you for your service.
At least it's not freezing cold outside tonight, I guess. Fair enough. So in, last fall, we completed the, the traffic data collection, which was the first data collection post-pandemic. The previous traffic that we had was pre-pandemic and was noticeably higher. We actually counted traffic that was about, about seven to, seven to eight percent lower than what we counted previously. So that plays into some of the things, kind of opens up some opportunities here, because when you take existing traffic and you have to forecast out for PennDOT's purposes to 2045, which is about how far we need to go, it, it makes a big difference on what's feasible and what's not. Okay? We did that. We also did traffic analysis with those numbers and came up with the alternatives and the concepts I'm going to kind of explain to you here tonight. And then we sketched up the concepts. So the concepts, data collection, analysis are mostly complete. We are, like I said, ready to take the next step and start getting buy-in, start to identify where we can go to get resources, grants, other opportunities to fund these improvements. But tonight, I'm going to take you through sort of what we saw and what we prepared for you based on those seven projects. I'm going to start at the other end of the corridor from where I usually start. I'm going to start at Earliestown Road. We have Earliestown Road and Main Street out here, this is a little, a little bit cut off, but there really is, in what we're laying out here, no change to that intersection. The change really starts here at Pine Street, where you'll see we have two lanes westbound, one lane eastbound. We have four lanes out there, and if you want to take one and make it into a left turn lane, we're not widening the road. That was something we talked about, we didn't want to widen the road, we want to stay within the curb lines. We need to take one of those lanes and use it as a left turn lane throughout the corridor, and we'll see where those turn lanes are at the subsequent intersections. So we did some traffic analysis and determined that the best direction to take it from was the eastbound direction, leaving two in the westbound direction. What this allows is that free-flow movement from Earliestown Road to remain in place. That was a concern that the community had with some of the concepts we had rolled out with the road diet. That is going to stay exactly as it is with this need study. We move through Pine Street, we have two lanes westbound, the one lane eastbound. We line up the through lane in the eastbound direction so that you're not dealing with so much jockeying of position there. You kind of run out through there and you're, you get into that right turn lane, and you don't realize it, and you got to weave in. That kind of creates some, some confusion. Central turn lane starts at Pine Street and gives a left turn for vehicles headed into and out of the various parcels along Bull Avenue. If you can flip to the next slide. The intersection of Bollesburg Pike and Church Street is shown, this is a full signal replacement. The mast arms there and the poles are reaching the end of their life, plus they're not long enough to accommodate some of the ideas that were identified in, in the road diet. In fact, they wouldn't even be long enough to do some of this that we see here. With that improvement, we include additional pedestrian crossings, we complete the pedestrian crossings there, anticipating a more developed, more, more village-type of feel in this, in this area. The two lanes westbound continue through this intersection, the one lane eastbound continues, and you see the, the two center turn lanes, or the left turn lanes that we can now put at that intersection. And those turns can get out of the way of the through movements without as much fear of getting, getting rear-ended then. The center turn lane continues. And go to the next signal, you can see the Military Museum intersection. I am sorry, that cuts off the way that does with the projector. But there would be two lanes westbound, one lane eastbound, and the two center turn lanes. The thing that's cut off on the, the right side there is the pedestrian crossing, enhanced pedestrian crossing, where we had a pedestrian fatality just a year or so ago. That project was submitted for a grant. We did not win that grant, but we did meet with Jim Saylor and the Center County MPO to identify other grant programs. Amy and Jim Saylor and I met, and we have some leads on that, but that remains a part of the need study, getting that into this. There's some revisions to the PA Military Museum driveway to line up the bike path there. And then we continue out here to the Warner Boulevard, Shingle Town Road intersection. This left turn lane gets lengthened, and not to make this seem too real, but this is not how long it is today, it's only about that long today. It would be longer, we'd remove the median island to get the left turn lanes lined up and take out some of the sight distance problems there. And then we have new pedestrian crossings and some signal updates here. I believe at the last supervisor's meeting, you said you would prefer to have the crossing on this side of the intersection because that's where the bike path and, and the other connections are. That didn't make it in here. We actually have a design that shows all of the pedestrian crossings, but we can show it here as easily as here. The traffic analysis is summarized here, and unfortunately, the Earliestown Road intersection is all the way off the screen. It's all green out at that intersection. Green represents acceptable level of service. Red X represents not acceptable level of service. And this is no build. If we just add the traffic to 2045 on our existing roadway, we end up with something at the Military Museum driveway that's not very desirable. Technically, it's what we call level service F, it's when the delay goes beyond what is considered acceptable for this, this type of area. Like I said, we looked at taking that lane away from either direction, westbound or eastbound. We found out that westbound worked best, and that's what I showed you. We actually go from a level service that's unacceptable to something that's kind of in the middle, right around the capacity point, but the westbound gave us better performance, and it's an improvement over no build. We think by going to PennDOT with this, they'll actually see this as an improvement overall. Because we took away a lane, turns are a little easier to make out of some of those side streets. So that is the need study, the projects that we will be progressing, and before I go into this, if you could step back just a second, I don't want to confuse too many things. What I was showing you in all of this is what I call step one. This is the need study, this is what you're asking us to do right now. But we have those sixteen projects that we started with. If you remember, we whittled that down to seven, and then we did the need study. Step two and step three gives a little bit of a vision for what's next. What could we do next with this? We have all these ideas, we have these other options. Step two and step three, go ahead, get to those options. Step two deals with the Earliestown Road, Main Street intersection. There's some things that you can change there, like that channelized lane can be converted to a yield that will operate fine with the new traffic that we collected, post-pandemic traffic. And then at some point, if you wanted to, you could vacate that second westbound lane. Remember, you had two lanes westbound? If you take that lane away, you basically have the road diet option. You could test this as a demonstration project, rather than going all in on it, test it as a demonstration project and see what the community thinks. If they like the idea, you could proceed to implement it fully. But as a demonstration project, you can also pull it back. It, it gives you options for commitment there. We heard a lot of good things about the road diet, we also heard some criticisms of it. We don't want to lock anybody into it, but it's a step you can take as step two. And with that, you maintain the same operations as you had with step one. Now, when we go to step three, we then get into changes at the Warner Boulevard, Shingle Town Road intersection, where we wanted to take away some of those big sweeping, channelized turns there. You can activate the flashing yellow arrow signals there and actually move the entire road diet out to that signal. Again, that may seem a little far out there, but I wanted to give you an idea that we're doing this need study not just to set up the need study projects, there's more that it builds into, and we're trying to kind of Lego it a little bit here so you can build the pieces as you want after we get some of these needs figured out, some of the things we know need to be addressed out there. So that's just sort of a preview of what could happen. And then the next slide just shows the performance of, of some of those options, and, and they're down here. Step two actually keeps, keeps the same operation as our westbound two. And then step three, this, the intersection there with the stop signs at the PA Military Museum starts doing some funny things in our models. We don't believe the models at that point. Quite honestly, they just don't apply. So we'd have to monitor that and see if that was actually doable, and like I said, this is far out. This is what we're focused on right now. And with your questions, your concerns, or your blessing, we can go to PennDOT and take the next step in, in starting discussions with them.
When you look at the Military Museum, Bull Avenue, Red X, when the brewery was proposed as being built, does that, did they have to do a traffic count to, to give us a guess about a right turn, left turn at that intersection?
They did, and they did that study pre-pandemic. And traffic impact studies are only required to look out five years. When we're doing studies like this for possibly federal grants or, or bigger pots of money, we need to look out 20 years. They looked out five. So they didn't see some of the same impacts.
What does that mean with respect to that red X with that?
This red X is in 2045 with post-pandemic traffic. They did not look out that far, so it did not fail in their study.
So within a year or two, when the business opens, we don't know what kind of traffic we're going to be dealing with?
No, we, we believe it's going to be acceptable in that timeframe.
Without, without the improvements of what we, what we've got to be tested on.
Right. But when we do those improvements, we improve the situation there. We don't make it any worse.
Let's hope we're right.
Nigel, do you have any comments or questions for him?
Not right now. I'm pleased to, I like the idea of getting the left turn lane in somehow.
Yeah, you would.
Nice, yeah, for, for my neighborhood. And I, has there been a recent traffic count since Liberty Hill has been in? Because I know a lot of people, I see a lot of cars turning left and then turning right on Memorial Drive, obviously going to Liberty Hill, and it's increased the left turn volume at that intersection. Like during heavy traffic periods, there's always, every light, there's always somebody waiting to turn on, including me.
Right. Well, we, the traffic counts we did for this study were taken in September of last year. So if we had something to compare it to, we could probably see the difference in those left turns.
Well, September of last year would include all Liberty Hill, and so if you're, if you're monitoring the left turns there, then you'll have that number.
Yeah, that left turn at that intersection at Church Street and Bollesburg Pike, it does justify a left turn lane. It's one of the reasons why PennDOT's very supportive of the idea of a road diet here, because that's a big safety improvement. Left turn lanes help safety.
Yeah, thank you.
And the other thing for your benefit, I'll mention, we're looking at, with the new traffic counts that we took, we're looking at re-timing the signal at Warner and Shingle Town Road because there are some places we can reduce delay with the new traffic patterns and volumes that are out there. There really is a difference in, in how traffic's moving around after pandemic as compared to pre-pandemic, so.
Looking at that, when you look at the one at the Pike and Church Street too, it makes the, it makes the side streets wait an awful long time. You, you roll up to it and you've still got to wait 45 seconds. That's why I'm always under the wire coming here.
Is the blinking orange arrow accomplishing what it was intended?
Yes.
I see it a couple places in Ferguson Township, and I'm wondering if it's, do I got it posted?
I don't know that anybody's done an official study to look at. It's supposed to help resolve crashes a little bit better than the five-section signal heads that we used to use a whole lot of. At least that's what the research has, has shown, that it, it's more intuitive and drivers more intuitively understand what it means. And you also don't get a situation where you have a left turn and a through movement showing a, a green, green ball, as we call it, and having confusion over what that means for them. They get a flashing yellow arrow, or they get a green arrow, or they get red, and those three things are more clearly understood by left turners. Again, according to the research, I only know what I read in the, in the papers, in the research.
I have just, I have just a comment. For people who are asking why, why we bother with this, I think because we're anticipating more traffic, plus with our commercial, what do you call it, village commercial? Village commerce ordinance that we've enacted along that, that is our commercial strip. We anticipate over the years, different types of buildings to meet, and parking in the rear parking, off-street parking, and a lot more bicycle traffic coming through there, bringing into Bollesburg, especially with our, our new restaurants and Bruce, Bull, Bull?
Bull Brewery. Bull City.
Anticipate either bicyclist or a lot more specialized traffic through there. And that's where we want to look at it now, rather than later, until we get to the point where, oh, we should have looked at this.
Yeah, yeah, trying to be proactive, right? Yeah.
I'm surprised that they want to keep the slip line in. That, I thought was, was a no-no at first, or first.
Well, it's, it's one of those things that allows them to move through that intersection without having to stop. And in the, in the future, like I said, when you want to, if you want to test out the demonstration for the road diet and, and make that a yield movement, take that lane and move it and make it into a bike facility of some kind. You know, you can, you can open it up like a pop, we call them pop-up type of improvements. Open it up on a, on a, on a summer day, on a summer day, when there's not maybe semester traffic here with, with Penn State. If you're, you know, because with any sort of demonstration project, you also have to do your homework to make sure it's marked correctly and you've got the right things in place to do it. But, but when the traffic's lower and people will be more likely to be outside on a summer, it could, it could get a lot of attention, and then we could also do our follow-up with the community and ask them what they think. Some may say this is great, some may say I don't like this idea at all.
And another thing is, we, we're not rushing into this. This isn't going to happen next year. We're not going to screw traffic up next year. Wait.
No.
We've been working on it. No. Bruce, do you have anything you want to add to this?
He's shaking his head now.
No? Okay. Okay, I only have a couple things. The one question, I think you said it, but I want to make sure, at Bull, going up on the hill, the Pike and Church Street, that intersection, when we redo all that, will that have left turn arrows also instead of just every man for himself?
It does not currently meet the need for it. Now, townships have a lot of flexibility in whether or not they want to install it. When we get to the point of designing that signal, we would seek out your input on that. Sometimes, sometimes there's a specific need, like there's a school there, or there's, you know, the police have a, I know downtown at one point, the police wanted to get out of the municipal building and have a left turn arrow for some purposes, and they were allowed to put one in. There'd be some discretion.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask it, I think the people living on the hill and, and those wanting to turn into Church Street would appreciate an arrow. I think, I think that would go a long way to, to get some sign on for this.
Okay.
And the only other thing I wanted to, to just comment on, or whatever, is obviously the, the elephant in the room is the State College area connector, and depending on how that goes through, we might, this road might be a dead end at some point where there's no place down here to get on it. You have to get on it Warner Boulevard or down the valley. So I guess at that point, that could very well impact a lot of the traffic that we're looking at. It could reduce even more.
It, it could, and it would make just about any of these ideas with, with lower traffic, obviously, work, work even better, or have, you know, with, with fewer cars, there's fewer opportunities for crashes, more opportunities to make the street into what you would want. You'd really see a change in the street environment at that point. Of course, businesses may not like that because then you're taking away their stream of, you know, of, of traffic, but I, I agree, that is the elephant in the room. So we're also trying to be cognizant of that. It's another reason why we're going to PennDOT to get their buy-in, so that we're not, you know, off the map or not working with them closely.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Amy, Todd, any of you guys have any? Yes, sir.
Can you go on the microphone, please? Thank you.
Yes, now you wish you wouldn't use your microphone.
My name's Martin McGann, and I'm here this evening for another issue, but I just had a question. The bikeway coming out from State College comes down past the Military Museum, and then I guess you have an option of going left into the residential neighborhood or going right down, I believe it's Church Street, is that correct? Okay. When you're talking about the improvements at Church Street, are you thinking about putting in a bike lane to encourage people to not ride on the sidewalk, but ride down the street in order to get into town? to encourage people to not ride on the sidewalk, but ride down the street in order to get into town?
Amy, if you could bring up the, the slide with the Shingle Town Road to Church Street section. Back up to the, actually, if you go to the next one there. Yep, the other way. I can see Earlystown. There we go, there we go. With the, with the four lanes that are there now, curb to curb, not many opportunities to put a, a bike facility there. However, this idea that we talk about with, with the road diet, that would take away this lane on, on this side here, and the curb would essentially be moved to here, although you'd still have the pavement over there. Being that the path is on that side with the Military Museum, one way to use this as a bike facility is to delineate it and configure it as what we call a cycle track. It would have both directions on one side of the road, like a shared-use path. It's just an on-road, shared-use path that would have a, a two-plus delineated, it could be vertically delineated on this dash line here, and then the bikes both move, bikes and pedestrians could both move and use that lane to reach down to this intersection. That's a, it's a popular, the cycle track idea is popular in more urbanized spaces. My one concern would be the speeds of traffic here versus other places. But we have seen it implemented in, in places that have similar character. We have some pictures, I think Robith Beach actually put a few of these in and have, have traffic moving right next to, right next to their flow of traffic, Main Street, in and out of town.
How would you handle that as you get down to the, to that free-flow issue? And then picking up the sidewalk that goes up toward Liberty Hill?
Yeah.
On the other side of the street?
Yeah, that's, that's a design challenge. There are a number of different ways that you can handle that, depending on what you do with that channelized turn. Remember, we said you'd make it a yield. It would be a yield or a stop. Or in the road diet study, you saw us bring that down to a right turn lane. There are a number of different things that could happen there, but you would need to control. It would no longer be free-flow. It would have to yield or it'd have to stop.
And if the precipitous drop over the yard rail as you go around that?
Yeah, there, there are no opportunities to put it on the other side, unless you would do a lot of, uh, stream work. And I bet that's a wetland, so you don't want to touch. You don't really want to touch it.
The sidewalk's huge, quite evident by Liberty Hill people walking down into Liberty Hill.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yep.
There's a lot of people across that. Oh, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay, anything, nothing else? Well, thank you, and we'll go ahead and move on.
Okay.
What do you need to ask tonight? Anything?
I, I think just to vet this with you, and if you're good, if we've got a consensus or if you need a resolution to take the next step and go to PennDOT. I don't know what the procedure is, but for this kind of thing, we just didn't want to go to them before we went to you and make sure we're all on the same page.
I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't proceed. I mean, we started this in, what, 2016 when we got the smaller business plan. So it's not happening overnight. So I don't, I don't have a problem with that if any of my colleagues do.
I'd keep working till we get another.
Get an answer.
Headbutting from PennDOT.
Yeah, it takes a while to butt their heads.
This, uh, this time, we're trying to avoid that as much as possible, which is kind of why we're going about it the way we are. But thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And regarding the, the four-way stop, I would be glad to meet with residents out there over the next week or so, if, if that works for you.
We'll just have Amy.
I saw you were here. I, I wanted to make sure that was offered, so that we could at least meet you there. Wednesday would be wonderful.
Well, I'll let, we're going to let Amy get, put that together and.
All good. Thank you.
Good one, though, Wednesday. I don't know, nobody.
Exactly.
Thanks, Bob.
All right. Next up on the agenda, Hawk Ridge, Lot 1, minor subdivision plan.
On November 4th of last year, staff received from Pantera Engineering a minor subdivision plan for Lot 1 of the Hawk Ridge subdivision that had been approved more than a decade ago. Now, the lot now proposed for subdivision is the 1.535 acre lot at the northeast corner of South Academy Street in Emma Court. It used to contain the Weaver House and accessory structures. The lot is served by public water and sewer. Two reviews of the plan have been completed and a number of comments remain to be addressed. Most of the comments pertain to the repair and buffer regulations and the developer's desire to have portions of those regulations waived, which will be discussed further below. Staff would like to briefly discuss a couple of other important comments before delving into the waiver requests. First, staff has asked the sidewalk be constructed along the east side of South Academy Street for Emma Court north to the terminus of the property proposed for subdivision, a length of about 270 feet. Harris Township cannot require the sidewalk, and it's important to point that out. And this has been discussed with the developer and his agent, but given the history of safety complaints from residents through the years, staff felt it important to ask for the amenity at this time. In discussions with the developer, he's indicated that he's not likely to install the sidewalk. Second, the park land required with original, the original plan is being addressed with this plan. The developer has verbally agreed to provide a check in the amount of $27,000 to satisfy the park land requirement, which should bring this issue to a close. The waiver requests I mentioned earlier involve three specific sections of Chapter 11-4.14, excuse me, the Repairing and Buffer Regulations. 11-414D1, 11-414D2, and 11-414D3. The memo that accompanies the agenda regarding this matter provided more specific discussion of the requests, the reasons why they are requested, and staff's opinions on the rationale and justification provided for the requests. In brief, staff believes the proper justification for the waiver request has not been provided. There's no hardship related to the property that prevents development in compliance with the ordinance requirements has been documented, and no evidence has been submitted demonstrating that reasonable changes in the plan could lessen or eliminate the need for the requested waivers. Staff advises that the granting of the waiver requests at this time could prove problematic for future waiver requests involving these specific regulations, as well as other regulations within Chapter 11. Absent information that demonstrates the pronounced need for relief from one or more requirements of the subdivision and land development ordinance to allow any reasonable development of a property or properties, a decision to grant waivers would be arbitrary and could represent, or could present legal challenges in both the short and long term for Harris Township. Staff believes it's also important to point out that developers have the responsibility to design their subdivision and land development projects in a manner that is consistent with the ordinances adopted in the municipality in which they choose to develop. It is not the responsibility of the municipality to waive or otherwise alter the existing regulations, except in those rare instances when the regulations are unjust or the regulations, regulations prevent any reasonable development of properties. In this matter, the regulations are not unjust, nor do they prevent the reasonable development of the subject property. A time extension for action on this plan expires today at midnight. Absent an additional written time extension offered by the developer, the board must act one way or another on this plan at this meeting. At this time, I won't go through all the possible recommendations for a motion for the board supervisors. I'll leave it to the chairman to decide, you know, what we're going to discuss and, and what order, and then eventually we can get to the recommendations that are appropriate.
Okay, I'm, I'm almost positive there's going to be a lot of discussion on this. So before that all starts, what I'd like to do is, is have John come up and, and come up here for questions. And I'm going to let my colleagues, we're going to go through a round of questions with us on anything that you might have on this thing that we could clarify. And then we'll go open it up to the public, and then we'll have some discussion. So I'm going to start with Denny. Do you have anything you want to bring up to Mr. Sepp?
Let's, let's wait for.
You want him to go ahead through all?
We want their presentation first.
Okay. Well, I was going to, I was going to, I know, I've got it here. I read it already.
Is it me or you, John? Go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you.
They want to hear your presentation. Go ahead.
Okay, thank, um, you do have my waiver requests that I had put forward. Just want to stress, this, it is, it is unique in that the preliminary plan for this project was actually designed in 2009. And there, this was always supposed to be the second phase of the project. The, the first phase of the project's already approved and built. The second phase was a re-subdivision of Lot 1. And the repairing buffer ordinance was not in place at that time. Should, you know, if, if the repairing buffer was in place at that time, it would have been put on the plan. And we would have, we would have obviously had to take that into account when we designed these lots. Mr. Songer could sell that lot right now, and somebody could build on it without any regard to repairing buffer at all. At least what we're proposing is, is a 35-foot repairing buffer with, with planting on it. Your repairing buffer ordinance does not require landscaping, so we figured that that was a good alternative to, to provide improvements to the repairing buffer rather than just having a repairing buffer area. Finally, not finally, we'll be talking quite a bit, but Lot 12, which is the lot to the east, you could, is fairly significantly impacted by the repairing buffer. And Martin and Lee McGann here are here tonight. They are the owners of Lot 12. And they would, they would appreciate the opportunity to discuss their plans on that lot as well. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have to try to hopefully come up with a solution that works for everybody.
Okay, who wants to go first?
I'm not really ready now.
You ready, Denny?
Well, I've, I spent mostly yesterday, who asked me about the, you're doing Hawk Ridge. It's getting crazy. Thanks. I reread all that, and I appreciate what you submitted here, John. I guess all of my points regarding the request for the waiver come down to the paragraph that Todd read with respect to the responsibility of the design into our ordinances rather than the reverse. It's, it seems as though it's a somewhat backward approach to working with the municipality to come and say, we're going to change it. We spent a lot of time putting the repairing buffer program together, and I was on that committee. And the 35-foot one, 50 to 35-foot intrigues me. You know, I, I could be convinced to look seriously at that. But in terms of the rest of the waiver request, I, I don't, I don't see that impacting the, the project.
Waivers are permissible per the EMC. If it was a zoning ordinance, I'd have to go to the zoning ordinance board. So it's on, it's incumbent on me to plead my case to show why this unit, this particular project would, would require waiver. Again, I go back to the fact that the preliminary plan predated the ordinance, and this is a very small section of stream. It's only 120-foot of stream between two pipes. The pipe that goes underneath Emma Court and the pipe that goes down a couple hundred, few hundred feet down Academy Street, and then discharges into a concrete ditch. So it's really not a critical repairing area to begin with. And, you know, those are the two unique situations that we are using to request the waiver.
Were someone pleased to see that, was DEP, did, did the walkover with Jerry? I mean, John, you know? In terms of justifying the classification of that flowing water, I think that pretty well proves the fact that it's there. And I don't think what you presented to me justifies the waiver request.
One, one final, not, one, another thing, is that this area has all been disturbed, not only by the project that we've done. I mean, part of the road is now in the repairing buffer. But the stream had been rerouted, historically rerouted by the farmer who had lived in the Weaver House prior to Mr. Weaver. So this is not a pristine natural chan, a 120-foot section of pristine natural channel.
And the photos, there were photos.
Somewhere on the back of it, right here.
Back this way, okay. I guess that's where the DEP comment was, was placed too, wasn't it? Okay, okay.
Nigel, you ready now, or you, you still?
No, I'll keep going.
Okay.
Bud, Bud, you want to?
I still want. Well, I actually am not ready to deny this necessarily. But with Denny, there's some, some things you want to think about. One thing that, that does, it, it is true is that when you buy a piece of property, it's, it's one ordinances or one level of things, and then all of a sudden it's changed in the middle of it. That's a concern. I, I don't know that, that that means we should, should automatically accept whatever's presented us on this. But whenever you talk about repairing buffers, it's 50 feet on each side of the stream. Spring Creek has that, but Spring Creek is a different, different, uh, stream than, than this is. This is intermittent. It's still called a stream, but it's only, I don't know, a couple of months a year. I'm not quite sure how wet that is up there, how long it is wet up there. It is wet, and that's, that's an issue. 35 feet, I, I, I've read through this and tried to digest a lot of it, and I can't. I'm, I'm not a soil engineer. I'm not an engineer. We have engineers that say it's not good. We have another engineer say it is good. So I don't know where we are in the middle of that. I'm, I, I think there's got to be something that would work up there. And, and I don't know, the statement is that from here, it, it can be developed without that. And another one says it can't be with, without some sort of, of a concession up there. So where we are, I don't know. But I, I don't, I'm not ready to say, let's just walk away from this. I mean, I, I think that's some, some area, something good can come out of this. But you, they, that even, no matter what is built up there, still has to be a repairing stream through there somehow.
You know, one, one idea to throw out, and of course, it can never be resolved tonight, but we're kind of locked into this piece of ground with this subdivision, because we're just replodding this lot. So if we were to be required to provide a two-to-one mitigation ratio, we're actually going to be providing more repairing buffer than the 50-foot requires. So that, that's self-defeating. That, that, that couldn't work at all. DEP has repairing buffer requirements on other streams, and they allow off-site repair, uh, mitigation. And, and again, that's just something to throw out, but.
We've, we did something similar at the Gates Estates. When they were, we, we allowed a variance in so many of it, and they mitigated some other through that, that stream that seems to run down through there. And it's, it's only, it's only seasonal too, so. But, but we allowed them some leeway. I don't know how that would work on this particular plan, but it, it seems to me there is something that, that we can work out.
Yeah, there is, there is future land to be developed, possibly developed above this, south of this project that we, we've been talking about with you, and we'll be coming in with plans for that. But there's areas up there that could be used for mitigation perhaps. Maybe that's a, a way we could compromise.
Well, basically what we're talking, what we're talking. Well, what we're talking about is water coming down the mountain. But during the spring when the rain's calm, that's when, that's when the water hits Academy Street. And well, but whenever it's heavy rain, generally in the springs, the thaw, that's hit. And that is, when you have water coming off the mountain, you've got a mess. And we've been dealing with that for, for a year. I thought we had it pretty well under control up there. We, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars up there doing different mitigation purposes up there. In fact, there's still an issue on the, as you go up Academy Street on the right, and behind a couple houses back there, it's a stream. So, but I, I don't know, I, I just think there's a way to handle that. I, I don't know that we, that, that a 50-foot, a 50, a 100-foot, 50-foot on either side of that, right?
Yeah, the, the. The repairing buffer is not to, to handle the stormwater. It's to control, it's to improve the quality of the water. Now, when we did Hawk Ridge, worked with Don Franzen at the time, that stormwater design was actually above and beyond the, the ordinances at that time to, to acknowledge the issue. And you could, I don't know if you've been up there to see the size of the basins up there.
Yeah.
But there, there, you know, significant stormwater improvements put on that project.
Well, but the issue is you want to be able to use more of that land to, to, to develop on that, on that particular plot right there. Is that, that, I guess that's what we're, what the goal is, right?
Well, uh, does then, anybody have any? Of course, I could introduce Mr. McGann, who could tell you what his intention for Lot 12 would be.
Before you do that, John, could I clarify?
Sure.
The area, if you look at this plan here, the pink area is the outskirts of what the 50-foot repairing buffer would require. All that yellow area in there is 35-foot repairing buffer that is being offered by the developer, plus some additional land down here that amounts to very. the developer, plus some additional land down here that amounts to very little. So we're talking about the difference between what's in yellow and what's in pink, just so we don't go off on a tangent and think that we're requiring a huge amount more land with the ordinance requirement than what the developer is.
And under my part, and the exchange, the board used the word "exchange."
Right.
It most significantly affects Lot 12.
Sure.
That's not, that, and that, inside that is a linear gully that runs down there. But you're looking at a gully to me.
Right down the middle. You bisect the pink sections right down the middle is where it goes.
Okay. It's like a gully that goes down. That's what we're looking at.
Exactly.
Does that picture of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Bruce, I see your anxious there. Do you have some comments you'd like to make?
Well, quite simply, I do think that the DEP riparian buffer requirements are kind of simplistic. They don't seem to pay a lot of attention to topography, but just rely on, you know, a certain width, a certain length, width around the stream. However, I don't see, you know, our job's not to rewrite DEP's requirements, and at this point, I'm not convinced that there's any reason to grant a waiver from what's being required elsewhere in the township, the county, and the state.
It's really hard to, you look at a gully like that and wonder about the rationale of having a riparian so wide, buffer so wide. And when we made waivers in the past, we've actually done it with a trade-off to have some improvements done in the riparian area to, you know, kind of offset, offset that, offset the waiver, you know, losing. So just to make the whole idea more practical, and I think that was in the townhomes off of the Gates, I mean. Yeah. And it just seemed to make sense there. So this is, this, I just, you know, I'm not an expert. I need to, I'd need to know a lot more to really make a decision. But I think, I'm not ready to say no, but I'm not ready to say yes at this point.
Okay. I want to, I just want a clarification. I want to make sure I understand this. This is what's approved, right here. The way it's set up right there with no riparian buffer, that was before the...
Let me explain what this is. This is a sheet from the preliminary plan that was in 2008. The same stream runs through there. This was, these were the shapes of the lots that were shown on the preliminary plan. A little bit different scale, so this one's naturally a little bigger than that one. But this is the same lots using the same colors, how they're designed with this plan now. And the reason I put that up there was just to demonstrate that there is some flexibility in designing these lots a different way.
My question is, if this is approved, basically, we're talking about this piece of ground right here being added, taken to, added to this one, taken off of this one.
Now, there's a difference between what you're saying and what actually occurred. That plan on the left was approved. The preliminary plan was...
I thought this was the preliminary.
The preliminary plan was approved, and it showed those lots. And we went to the final plan version of that. Those lots weren't shown on the final plan. There was a note put on the plan reserving the right to further subdivide Lot 1.
What drawing was on the final plan?
It just showed Lot 1 as it is today, one lot. As I explained in the memo, had the final plan and the preliminary plan been phased, if those plans had showed a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, Phase 2 being subdivision of Lot 1 in either the design on the left or the design on the right, the ordinance change would not have affected what they're doing today. It was not shown as a phase in either of those plans. Instead, a note was put on the plan, and that is the thing that we believe that prevents anything that was really discussed with the preliminary plan from being discussed as an approved design.
And just to confuse the matter even more, please do, John. The preliminary plan was approved in 2009, and it was a final plan that was approved in 2009. And our intent was to get that final plan reapproved, not thinking about the implications of the riparian buffer on the preliminary plan.
We're asking, the riparian buffer is what you have to delay, to build nothing on there, or you have to put, apparently you have to put certain vegetation on there. You just let it go by on its own.
No, you don't have to.
Okay. So those white markers down, you just have to let them belong for three years, and whatever grows there, grows there. And then you can't do anything with that after that. But what we're saying is, maybe we should allow them to go thirty-five feet instead of fifty feet. Is that what we're saying?
Well, that's...
Is that too simple?
No, that's part of it. We're requesting a little less on Lot 12 because the thirty-five-foot impacts Lot 12 a good bit. And then there's a section of ordinance that when you reduce it to thirty-five feet, you have to make it up for it somewhere else at a two-to-one ratio. And if we have to do that here, there's no sense in making the request. Now, if we could make it up somewhere else upstream of this, that's a possibility. To be fair, John, you're not requesting a little less on Lot 12. You're requiring no riparian buffer on that. You're requesting no riparian buffer on Lot 12.
Okay. So Lot 12 is...
I can't see it. It's right here, the purple one. It shows all those pretty trees. No, that's Lot...
This is Lot 12, this is Lot 12, and this is Lot 12.
Okay. Well, I guess what we don't, whatever we want to do, we don't want to create problems with stormwater runoff, with stormwater coming out of the mountain.
Let me finish what I was going to say.
Okay, finish.
First off...
Clear me up.
Well, again, I wanted to clarify that, but when I look at this, you know, we have precedent that we have done this before.
Yes.
We did it at the Gates, but we also did it at Mountain View, where we would have made some of the golf holes unusable, so we allowed them to put it up along the side of the property.
That had a nerve there, didn't it?
What's that?
It had a nerve there, didn't it?
Well, whatever. But we allowed them to put it along the side of the property and expand some of the ones from like twenty feet or thirty, up to the no-mow areas. And they added the no-mow areas and a few things like that, which we were able to compromise and make it happen. So I guess my question is here, and I'm to the point where this is an intermittent stream, and when you have a riparian buffer, the design of a riparian buffer is that you don't use any chemicals in there and you don't disturb it. It has nothing to do with what you want to put in there. So even if we put that whole fifty-foot, all that means is you can't disturb anything in that area. Now, I'm comfortable with thirty-five on an intermittent stream. I don't have a problem with thirty-five feet on an intermittent stream. Because again, we're talking a couple months out of the year. It's not going to affect the stormwater. It's not going to affect all that, but I would like to see it go somewhere else. I'd like to see us have that, and if it's in a future spot or another part of the development, I would like to see us put on some more area that would act as a riparian buffer. So I'm not opposed to doing that as long as we have someplace else to put some buffer or we do some kind of compromise.
Exactly the difference between the two examples you cited in this one. In the case of the Country Club and the Gates, they followed the regulations and the ordinance to the letter. They had other area on the property in which they could provide the mitigation, and they did that. And the mitigation has to occur on the property where the subdivision or the land development is taking place. The developer's agent himself says there is no place on this property to provide that mitigation. So that seems to take that...
That's a mute point.
...out of plot.
There's no, there's no area on this replot of Lot 1. There is area that is not included in this.
Submission. I don't want to pull the whole rest of the project into the subdivision of this replot. If there's a way of putting an exhibit on the subdivision plan without having it part of the subdivision, showing where the buffer can be made up, I think that could work.
I don't know that that's legal.
Mr. Promissory kind of...
No, it would be on the plan. It would be on the plan.
But it would not be part of this.
Yeah, and it's speculative, right? It's getting into the whole, that's not part of this plan. So we're speculating that if we do this in the future, we'll do this mitigation. But, you know, Mr. Songer said at the meeting in November, he can't perk up there, and if he doesn't get public sewer, what's going to happen? Then we're never going to get the mitigation. So it is, it's a promissory note.
I have a question. Do the biologists or whoever drew up the specifications for this riparian buffer, if, what would they say if there was none up there? I mean, how would that affect that particular stream or whatever that gully that runs down the stream only in there part-time? How would it affect that if there was no riparian buffer? I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure that, I don't know who all worked on it, I think, I think, when we went through that, I don't know, who did that? Who was our experts when we did that riparian buffer?
You mean the ordinance?
The ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, we, it was a conglomeration of what, eight or nine people. Yeah, it included biologists.
And they were right, like especially under Tammany Run.
Katie Bosky was on.
Yeah, Katie Bosky, with Tammany Run, they were there. There's, I don't know where that riparian buffer is there, but they did some work along the stream. Within five feet of the stream, they told us, "Make excellent work." Like down, we saw what they did, gave us all a hot dog. And it was right, it's only ten feet either side of Tammany Run, and they were very happy with that to keep the water temperature down, keep the planning there. Where does that apply to this a hundred percent? I guess that's where my confusion is, yeah.
And going back to what Amy said, maybe there is a, I mean, some plants require off-site improvements that aren't shown on the plan.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think, we'd have to ask the solicitor to be sure, but I don't think that this would apply here because, again, that's, that is speculative because that land, I don't know what development potential it has unless it gets public sewer, and I don't know that public sewer is a feasibility. So I think that we should probably look for a way to do this on-site if possible. And I know that Todd said, the memo that was from staff, Todd wrote and did an excellent job, and I know that he said in that memo, "Have you looked at other lot sizes? Like, is it, are you so sold and married to these lot sizes? Can you reconfigure the lots in some way to still get the buffer in?" Like, I understand people want to buy these things, but there has to be another way to crack this nut.
Lot 12 is the real, the real problem. Maybe I can introduce Mark.
Mark, if I have a second.
Sure, go ahead. Duffy's isn't open to that anyhow, so we're okay.
I have some material I want to pass out to you, but I'd just like to make some comments first, and that is I did receive a copy of the letter that Mr. Shea wrote. Thank you. And what I'd like to address is not to concentrate on numbers, but to concentrate on the ordinance itself. And I understand you had a committee that looked at this, and I'm looking at page two here. And to quote, "The purpose of this was to reduce the amount of nutrients, sediment, organic matter, pesticides, and other harmful substances that reach the watercourses, wetlands, subsurface, and surface water bodies." Okay. So what I'd like to show you tonight is information about the site. I'm going to go through this page by page just so you understand where I'm coming from.
Geez, it's in color too.
Do you like it? I don't imagine you want one.
Yeah, if you have a topic, you can give one more.
Okay. So the first image that I want to show you, and keep in mind that sentence that I read earlier, is an illustration from the riparian buffer guidelines. And by looking at that, you can see that the stream is in the center. And Mr. Lord, I'm sorry, I don't have this electronically for you. Okay. Anyway, and you can see that the stream's in the center, and the landforms run downhill towards the stream. And there is a vegetative buffer on both sides that is used to complete what the ordinance calls for. It's, this, during a heavy rain, the surface water will run overland into the stream. And if it's a light rain, a lot of it will percolate down into the groundwater and then run laterally and maybe get into the stream and just maybe get into the groundwater. Okay, so that's the first image. Now, let's, if you turn the page, you're going to see what actually happens on Lot 1R. And that is that the, the topography runs down to the intermittent stream, and then there is a slight raise, which is the edge of the stream, and then it runs downhill away from the stream. So going by the statement in the ordinance, anything past that vertical blue line will probably never get into the stream. Okay? So having a riparian buffer that extends past that is simply creating an edge that is not going to address what is in the ordinance. It's an artificial line. Now, I will tell you that John had indicated that they wanted to plant some trees, and I can understand why you might want to have something a little bit broader than the eight to ten feet. Because if you want to protect that corridor that the water runs down through, I would suggest that shrubs would be a good addition to that because they would be closer to the stream, they could create an overarching canopy, and then if whatever water is in there, might have more of a tendency to percolate into the ground instead of being evaporated out. Okay. So now, what am I basing this line on? Well, if you go to the next page, this is a copy of the subdivision plan with the original contours. This is before the construction of Emma Court. And you can see that the, there's a blue line that runs down through, that is the channel for the stream. The red lines are the, were the existing contours at the time of the approval. Now, what I've done, and you all know this, water runs downhill, and it also runs pretty much perpendicular to the contours. So I have plotted a path on here that shows you where the water goes that falls on Lot 12. And if you can follow those, there's very little that falls at the corner of Lot 12 that might get into that drainage channel. The rest of it is going to bypass the channel and end up running down across the remainder of Lot 1R. Now, I also included the last sheet here. This is the contours after the construction of Emma Court. And you can see that there is very little change in the direction of the water flow. So if you're worried about pesticides and contaminants and things like that, from Lot 12, only the things that are falling in the one corner, that would be between the property line and that orange line that I have there, that would be the only water that would essentially be getting into that intermittent stream. The rest of it is going to bypass it entirely. And I think if you were to look at the overall plan, you'd see that a good bit of the water on the, I guess it would be the north side of that stream, other than what falls directly on the bank, the embankment for the stream, most of it's not going to get into that intermittent stream. So having a riparian buffer of thirty-five feet on that side doesn't do anything to protect the stream. The protection of the stream is being done by the topography itself.
I do. Your last sheet here, Mark.
Yes, sir.
It assumes that no other earthwork is done on that corner of Lot 12. Is that correct?
That's correct. And if it came to it, if I owned the lot, I would be willing to sign something that would say, "That's going to be part of the buffer area in perpetuity."
Which is basically what our ordinance requires now.
Well, I'm not sure where your ordinance falls on this. The hatched area that you see here, I think that was a thirty-five-foot buffer.
Yeah. So basically, someone could buy this lot, be you or somebody else, they could totally regrade that lot or that corner of the lot, and anything on Lot 12 or anything that comes from Emma Court could go across that area that's then regraded. So it appears as if it's even more important to have the riparian buffer form as established there than what...
I agree.
could go across that area that's then regraded. So, it appears as if it's even more important to have the riparian buffer for the status there than what...
I don't disagree with you. I, I think a riparian buffer, if you wanted to put it on Lot 12 is fine, but I'm just pointing out that I would like to see it incorporate the area that's going to affect the intermittent stream rather than an arbitrary line based on some number that somebody came out with. I mean, I'm not sure, has there ever been a case where the stream is higher than the adjacent land that requires a riparian buffer? I mean, though, the whole thing, I mean, if you look at the first image here, you know, this is what everybody assumes when you, when you talk about riparian buffers, that the both sides, the water's going to go down towards the stream and we need that vegetative buffer to slow the water down, allow it to percolate down into the ground, collect some of the contaminants, things like that. I mean, it would be interesting to, to know with this particular situation, what would an ordinance be, or what would be added to an ordinance that would address this type of situation? And I, I know the ordinance is very specific, but I don't think it takes into account the fact that the land is lower than the stream.
Yeah, and, and there hasn't been a request in the 10 or 12 years that this ordinance has been on the books where somebody requests just a blanket waiver of the important regulations within the ordinance. So, I can't say that we've run up against a situation where a stream might be in the same situation you're describing here.
Well, I think John, John's point earlier was that over historical time here, somebody, this probably went downhill at one point and then somebody came in and they adjusted it to run along the contour, more or less along the contours and not downhill. So, that's why we have the situation we do. But I mean, I, I am not opposed to some riparian buffer on Lot 12. I just think that it ought to be based on the impact to the stream and not just a number that is thrown out because that's the number.
Yeah, and I, I would guess that there's probably not a stream anywhere in Harris Township that wasn't altered by a farmer or somebody building a house or somebody doing something. So, I, I think that argument, although it is valid, is, is not as strong as it might initially sound. And, and, and one of the reasons why the regulations say what they say is because we understand that over time, channels do change their locations. That's why at the time of subdivision or land development, the, the riparian buffer's centered on the stream. So that, you know, we're not, we're not going through 200-year history of the stream and trying to figure out where it was or where it might be in the future.
Well, I, I guess I... I will go back to the statement here about why the riparian buffer is important. And I would say that everything in that statement can be achieved by a much narrower riparian buffer on the north side because the topography is going to take care of the water running downhill. Whatever was stated in here could happen as that water runs downhill. And you may or may not be right. I, I don't know where you know this. I think, I think Jared has, has a comment.
This is, this runs east and west, right? Basically, east and west?
I, I think it does, yeah. I'm not...
I'm trying to get that.
This, more south.
Yeah, it starts south, more, more south.
Then it comes around, sort of.
Uphill to down.
But it comes down north?
When it crosses under Emma Court, it kind of pulls a hard left.
And so, then it sort of goes east-west?
That goes east-west.
Okay.
That area, um, if you look back through the old aerials, you'll see that it follows that course. The milkhouse was kind of placed on that area, but it follows that general course. Yeah, at the back. You can kind of see how the back of the barn kind of changed as you scroll through the aerial photos.
Oh, over, yeah.
Yes.
From the Weaver buffer. Yeah, it's gone.
It's gone.
Yeah, I just wanted to add quickly, um, you know, I thank Martin for his knowledge and what he's put into this. The USDA also has guidance in this. It's not strictly out of the DEP books. Trees add temperature control. The streamside buffer does add habitat for the macroinvertebrates. It's not all strictly sediment intercept. So, USDA guidance, even the DEP guidance, say, once you cross that 35-foot threshold and you decrease that, um... Where's the... Essentially, after that point, um, there's minimal return on this riparian buffer. So, getting some sort of shade, getting a place for the macroinvertebrates to grow to support stream health. Not a biologist, uh, but when Mr. Starks went out and did this investigation, you know, we were all there. He's looking for bugs. He's looking for the, the start of the food chain at the furthest headwaters of Spring Creek. So, um, that's, that's how this evolved to this conversation we're having now.
So, what you're saying is the more you minimize the width, it comes to a point where it's a mute point and not even useful.
Correct.
And 50-foot is, is optimum. 35 is doable. And anything lower than that is...
Yeah, if you look closely on Mr. McGann's chart, it has in those first two zones, minimum 50-foot. The second zone, minimum 50 to 100. So, they're at 150-foot when you do a, a big project. The O'Call Interceptor that the College Township Water Authority is doing, that's 100 to 150-foot buffer that we're putting in everywhere where we have a disturbance. So, that 50-foot is kind of the minimum that USDA recommends for sediment uptake. I agree, sediment uptake's not our goal here. But they're saying, once you cross that 35-foot boundary, you have almost no return on investment as far as habitat, temperature control from shading, that type of thing.
Two weeks a year?
I, that doesn't, doesn't factor into it.
If you reduce your value after 35, why is it 50?
50 is the minimum that published literature says.
I understand about that. But if, if you're telling me from science that if you get to 35 after that, that you got diminishing return?
After that, it falls off the cliff.
What, so why, why then 50?
Actually, whenever we talked about the ordinance in the committee, we started with 150-foot buffer.
I know, I was, I was on...
And we decided that was way too much to ask of developers and property owners. So, we compromised and reduced it to 50. And we, we thought that was the minimum that would be useful.
All right, well, let, let me, let me, let's just, because we're, we can sit here and talk about this all night.
It's going to get midnight.
Yeah. And, and you know, here's my, here's my thoughts and the final thoughts. And then I don't know where we go from here. I don't know what we can do. But here's my thoughts on this. Our, our objective here, regardless of what we do on these maps, is to protect the stream. Okay? If we can protect the stream with 35, 50, 150, whatever it is, then that's our goal, is to protect the stream. So, I'm, I'm, I'm almost to the point where I'm ready to say, I'm comfortable with 35. But I know my colleagues are all, you know, they aren't, they aren't ready to make a decision. But I don't know how we proceed from here because obviously, um, you know, we're, we're at a time when we've got to do something. So, I guess, uh, what do you guys think? I mean, do we want to, do we want to make a motion?
Frank, we, we do have some citizens comment.
Oh, we do?
Robin, go on Zoom.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Robin, if you want to unmute yourself.
No, I'm sorry, you wanted one too, didn't you? Okay, go ahead, Robin.
I'm mindful of what Todd said about starting at 150. And the reduction down to 50 already seems like a fair concession. 35 is the minimum, and I see no reason to change regulations. They bought the lot with the buffer. That was the understanding. And why should we now be in a position to accommodate individuals when we're trying to think about what's best for the whole township and what's best going forward in other projects as well? Do we want to start setting up opportunities for exceptions over and over? We have 50 for a reason, and I think we should stick with it. There is a good chance, as Amy mentioned, that the land above will not perk. So, promises of remediation areas above, it seems to me, are not useful at this time. Thank you.
Uh, one question, did you, she said you bought the land knowing that. I don't think that's...
Mr. Songer bought the land.
Mr. Songer bought the land? Now, who's?
Yes, Mr. Songer bought the land knowing that we had regulations in place.
No, that, that, we didn't have it then, right?
Yeah, when he bought the land...
After the ordinance was done.
We bought that after the ordinance. Wait.
He did. The original plan was done by Mr. Weaver, Mr. Drabelbis. And then they sold the property, John wondered, Mr. Songer buy the property?
2012?
It was pretty...
No, 17, 2017, 2017, yeah.
In that order, does it affect that?
Yes.
Oh, yes. But, I mean, in fairness, I, I didn't think of it because we had a plan that was approved prior to it, so...
Well, the plan was approved prior to that, okay.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that if they stuck with the plan that was approved prior, they wouldn't have to do the riparian buffer. But Mr. Songer wants to replot that lot. Am I correct, Todd?
Yes.
Yeah, and because of that, the riparian buffer's coming into play. So, it's a self-created issue. I believe Ms. Barton... Wait, hold on, Tom. I believe there's someone else in the room who wants to say something.
I did not plan on speaking. My name's Diane Power. Um, to, uh, just to recap the history, we had the 100-year flood on Academy Street. It, the McAdam flowed down the street, okay? What guarantee...
Into my house.
What guarantee do we have that there's not going to be another 100-year flood? I mean, it may be an intermediate stream right now, but we've got to be protected. I live at the bottom of Academy Street. I'm the one where it flows to, right? As well as Robin and the other people. Um, so, if you're going to make, if you're, when you look at this, please do not allow for any changes to be made on promises that it will be built on another, um, division, another section of Tom's property. Please make the changes so that Academy Street is protected as much as possible.
That, that does bear the question. Does this in any way eliminate floodwaters coming down there?
No, this, this, I, I think everybody will agree, this has nothing to do with stormwater control.
Because if, if that were the case, this wouldn't be a, this wouldn't be before us.
Yeah.
Right. So, we're not altering anything?
No.
Okay, we're saying, are you going to, okay, okay.
Tom, you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I think you'll recall what existed on this Lot 1R before we bought the land. And that was Mr. Weaver's house. And then he had a detached garage. And that garage was right adjacent to the, to the stream along with a milkhouse. And to get to the house, you had to essentially walk over this intermittent stream, which is really a two to three-foot wide, I'll call it a ditch, okay? That's, that's a rural term that I think most of us are familiar with. If you look at the pictures that were part of the submission, this is a very aesthetically pleasing area even today. But my point is simply, the impacts on that stream that existed when we bought the property, in my opinion, were substantial because of the way it was. And, and we've improved that. Now, we want to improve it more by planting plants, evergreen trees. We're not allowed to do anything with the stream in terms of regrading. It's, there's erosion problems there. John and I and, and Jared, we've met with the soil conservation people as well as DEP people. We were trying to look at alternatives to address the erosion problem and, and to try to work with people. But you can't do anything, okay, basically? And yes, I could submit an MPDES permit that would cost thousands of dollars, and there's no guarantee that would ever be approved. But my point is, the impacts on that small intermittent stream were worse when, when the home was there and when the garage was there. And we tore all that down. You'll recall, I said before, we tore it down and recycled everything. I had an, I, I had to pay an Amish contractor to come in and take it down. Couldn't find anybody else to do it. And that gentleman did, did a great job, and we recycled everything. Plus, all the other outbuildings that Weaver had there and so forth. In addition, we've, we've addressed stormwater and, and have cut some of the stormwater off that comes off the mountain by the detention basin that we built behind, uh, uh, Lot 12 and two, three, and four. And going forward, as John mentioned, we own land to the south as an intermittent stream, on this same intermittent stream actually, and wetlands. We're willing to put a permanent buffer along that 50 feet wide beyond where the wetlands have been mapped. And we've, we've paid a consultant to map those wetlands. And you might recall several years ago, when we were talking about this, I said if I was allowed to develop what we're calling Phase 2, and we had a discussion on that recently with respect to your new ordinance, that we would consider, if we were allowed to do it, for the cutoff swell along the foot of the hillside and take that over to the intermittent stream that runs along Tory Lane and divert that water coming off the mountain away from the area to the north, which includes Academy Street. Those are positive improvements I'm willing to undertake. And, and, and we would do that in 52. And I'll sign an agreement to that effect or whatever you'd like me to do. But, uh, you know, based on what you've heard here tonight, the, where anything beyond 35 feet is, there's not much of a return on investment there. Plus, the comments that Martin McGann made, you know, we'd just like to move forward with this. We think we spent a lot of time on it, and this is about the best we can get for this particular, and this is something that was there. We didn't create this. This was there, that the farmer built this intermittent stream years ago. But again, because of the buildings and the impact that they had on the stream, we think this is a definite improvement. And you're, by your own ordinance, you're, you're permitted to grant waivers when you think it's appropriate. And we'd ask you, uh, you do consideration in granting us the waiver John has requested. So, if there's anything else I can tell you or any questions you want to ask of me after, after we try to, try to answer them. But if you haven't seen this, I would encourage you to go up and take a look at this intermittent stream, which is really what most people call a ditch.
Okay, all right. What we're going to do here is, we need, we need to resolve this one way or the other here tonight.
We do?
Yes.
If you, if you, Frank, if you...
From my understanding...
If you feel it in another, if, if you feel it in another 30 days, uh, this was a good discussion here to appreciate the citizens spending this much time on it. If you feel another 30 days would be in your best interest, I'll, I'll grant that this evening. John can write something there representing me. I'm out of town, I'm out of the state, actually. And I'm willing, I'm willing to consider that. But, but I would like some of the supervisors, if you have time, to go up with me and look at this, look at this situation, and then continue our discussion next month's meeting. Especially if you're having a second meeting this month. Are you having a second meeting this month?
We are having one. But anyway, okay, well, let me, let me propose something here. I want to try to move this along as best we can. Obviously, the riparian buffer is an issue. But from my understanding, the, the extension on this runs out today, correct? So, we do have to do something with this today? Okay.
I guess it's 30 days.
Yeah, he said, and we would have to get it in writing by John.
By midnight tonight.
Midnight tonight. John's writing right now.
Okay, so do we have, do we have to make a motion to grant that or not?
If, if they give us the time request, you can then table this discussion to next month. I would, oh, look.
John has prepared an, an extension, but it says 90 days. So, either John can get out of bed... Would agree to 90 days.
All right. 30 days or 90 days?
I mean, I would just caution you that if we're doing the time extension, which I think is probably prudent, there has to be something new that comes forward.
Let me finish what I was going to say.
Well, hurry up.
Originally, I was going to say...
Give us Rita's diagram.
Pass it without doing the waivers, and come back and revisit the waivers later. But if we're gonna postpone this thirty days, when it comes back, if, if you want us to go to thirty-five feet or, or do some, I want to see the whole site plan, where we're gonna put the rest of the repairing buffer. It all has to be included in this, in this proposal. Because if we don't, then we're gonna be stuck with the fifty foot.
The variance doesn't, doesn't require any, any place, anyplace else.
No, no, well, it has to be in this subplane.
Has to be.
It has to be on this subplane.
Then I can't do it.
Yeah, that, that's not what he's saying.
Well, then you talked yourself into a lobo.
No, not necessarily.
Yes.
No, I don't think so.
I would, I, I, I think there's some possibility.
John, can you go to the microphone?
I think it's worth us all getting together again and giving it one more try to see if we could come up with something.
Let me, let me ask the, the part of this now. Uh, you would be happy if we lowered it to a thirty-five foot repairing buffer, is that what you're saying?
I'd be happy if you lowered it to a thirty-five foot repairing buffer on Lot 1R.
Yes.
Less than that on Lot 12.
Okay.
And that we didn't have to make up two to one on Lot 1 or Lot 12.
I would be happy with that, as long as, if we have thirty days, if, if, we, we know we're not changing any of the water flows, that's gonna happen by itself. Uh, water comes off that mountain wherever it wants to. Where, it just happens, that's a good channel for it to go right now. With a Hundred Year Flood, you don't know where it's coming from. But what we're saying, we're not changing any topography up there, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, you're, and, and I would be happy with thirty-five feet. I'm, I'm familiar with the repairing buffer next to, down here along 322, with the Shawley property coming back. They, they have fifty feet on either side. Well, they're parking their cars within five feet of that yard, which might not supposed to, but they probably are. But on this side of it, that white, they only have that white delineator, that's fifty feet from this stream. And I'm looking at that and thinking, how do those last twenty-five or thirty feet affect what goes on the stream? The first five feet where the trees are, the shrubs are, keeps the water cool, does all that sort of stuff. So I, I, I'm satisfied with the thirty-five feet, as long as it come back and someone says that, that is not gonna work. Our biologist or somebody, I don't know who says that, I'm, I would be happy with that, that motion, or that, that scenario.
The specificity of telling us where that exchange piece is.
Yes.
A piece of property that you currently own.
I mean.
Well, Mr. Songer.
Has to be invited.
Where would they put that? Where, where else would they put it?
Well, could they?
Well, that's not our job.
Wait, wait, let me ask Todd a question, and Mark, could they do the mitigation on another part of Hawk Ridge? The.
I don't think so, I think it has to be.
Has to be within these lots?
We can certainly ask our attorney, but I think it has to be on this property.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about above, I was talking about the.
Well, anyplace else, if you require me to, if it's required, you're required the fifty feet. You were only talking about this one particular stretch of, of intermittent stream. And I, I, I look at this, I see what's going on down there, and I, I, I own, Bart is very critical, very serious about that, and I, and we look at, we look at, uh, Woods, or, uh, Brooks, uh, there's no repairing buffer there, but it certainly is a nice stream, nice protecting down there, so. I guess, bottom line, unless we have that thirty days or wherever it is, I'm happy with the thirty-five, unless somebody back and says, gee, that's, that's really egregious.
We do have a thirty day.
Okay, thirty days, whatever it is, you got thirty days.
Yeah, vote to table.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to, to vote on this thirty day extension and table this?
Hold on a minute.
I have a motion, what was that?
Now a second.
We have a second.
Before you vote, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We've had a nice conversation about all the technical aspects of the ordinance, all the things we can and can't do. We've talked specifically about the property, but we started this conversation with a discussion about the fact that the requirements for the waivers have not been met. So is this board of supervisors interested in thirty days about talking about waiving requirements when potentially those requirements haven't been met for the waiver?
Well, I, again, I, I will tell you that I am ready because I read what you said and what those requirements are, and I think some of those are subject, but, uh, I don't have a problem talking about a waiver on this thing.
Well, one thing is.
Because we're gonna protect the stream, that's the law.
One ordinance, one ordinance isn't suitable for everybody. We found that on parking, we found that on parking dogs, and ordinance doesn't fit every scenario.
That is true, but it's a responsibility of the applicant to show that there is hardship that prevents the property from being developed, but leave. I would point out also, thirty days is not gonna get you to your March meeting.
That's right.
Well.
It's, it's gonna get you shorter.
Well, it will get me to the point where someone's.
It'll be in March, but it won't get you to April where you need to be. The, the next board meeting's in three weeks.
Well, then we can do thirty days again. You know, we, we, we give.
Now, wait a minute, wait, we're getting in an argument here.
Yeah, this is ridiculous.
I, I'm proposing that we accept the, or the waiver or the, uh, the time extension, and what I would like to see is, if we give him a thirty-five feet, how is that making it, uh, egregious? So there we go.
Yeah, ask them to show his work. There's criteria in that ordinance for a reason, so within the thirty days, ask them to show his work.
Well, I don't, the criteria, I don't, well, yes, okay, we can do it, we can go that whole route. I, I don't think that that is unreasonable question, listening to everything and seeing how, what that is. If, if, if they come back within the next meeting and say, we're ruining the world, why not by going to thirty-five feet instead of fifty feet?
All right, let's, let's, let's go, I got a motion.
Well, that's one of them.
I got, I got, I got a motion for the, uh.
Oh, that's it?
For the extension.
Oh, you're ahead.
Yeah, and a table.
And, and so, all those in favor of a motion to extend it thirty days?
Yes.
I, I got two ayes. Yes, I'm yes.
You have three ayes?
No. Nigel?
I said yes.
Okay, so you have four tomorrow.
You have four ayes.
Four ayes, one no. And then we're gonna table this until the next meeting.
So I guess you know where I stand on this, I don't know about the rest of them, but.
Take a look at the second paragraph on page four, expect to.
Was it, didn't we have somebody else want to talk? Maybe not, I think I missed it.
I think we did.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank the board for their time.
Okay. Well, let's move on, where are we at next? Zoning ordinance amendment request.
No, they're zoning.
The staff recently received a zoning ordinance amendment request from John Sepp, who happens to be here.
Here we go again, here we go.
About Pantera Engineering. Uh, Mr. Sepp, Sepp discussed with staff an idea to allow certain types of structures to be built within the township using building setback distances somewhat less than those required for most structures proposed for construction. Uh, the change would apply to all zoning districts. Now, all structures in each zoning district have required minimum building setback distances from property lines. Those distances vary by structure type, lot area, and zoning district. The one notable exception to these standards, uh, the standard building setbacks is small accessory structures. They may be located as close as six feet aside the rear property line so long as they are not larger than a hundred and forty-four square feet in area and are not taller than ten feet. Again, this is true in all zoning districts. Uh, Mr. Sepp requests that for a specific type of structure, uncovered and unenclosed grade-level patios, sports courts, and similar structures must abide by the district setbacks I described earlier unless they are very small. Uh, these types of structures are, structures are often proposed to be larger than a hundred and forty-four square feet in area. Staff and Mr. Sepp have exchanged ideas regarding this, his request, and have come to the conclusion that it is feasible to ask the board if such an idea is something they would consider for review. While much would have to be investigated and the planning commission would have to provide inputs since it would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance, staff believes that there may be some merit to a scenario where the required building setback is reduced to half of what would normally be required for uncovered and unenclosed grade-level structures such as patios and sports courts. Uh, if this is a discussion item, if the board believes the request has merit, they should move to refer to the matter of the planning commission for review and recommendation.
Before we get started on this, and I want to point that out, we're just deciding whether to send us to the planning commission for, for discussion, and I, I personally think that that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody, uh, make any comments?
I'll make that motion.
Bud's making a motion.
I'll say, let, let them chew on it.
Can I make a, a comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I move, but, I, one thing in here that, that I need explained, on, on grade, I, I, I lost it now, I read it.
Yeah, you're, it's over here, it's on this page.
It's on, yes, it's on a different page. On grades.
It's sticking out of the ground.
What's that?
So it wouldn't be sticking out of the ground.
Okay, what, what, what does that mean with topography, or just?
Yeah, it'd be, it would be blended with the, with the graded topography around the city.
So it has nothing to do, okay, so it would, but, it would, it would involve every lot that they want to build something that would, okay? Not, not just a certain lot, it's a certain, certain grade or a certain.
No.
Okay, okay.
I can see all kinds of questions that are over there, I think it's where I'm confused, like.
Yes.
I think, I think, uh, basketball courts, pickleball courts, uh.
Sports courts.
How they tend to upset neighbors. We've gone through a lot of the Patton Township, they don't like pickleball courts because they're.
Well, that's a little, that's, that's a situation here.
Well, I mean, that's, that's.
That's not do, that's nothing to do with.
Well, obviously, what they need.
I think this is a setback issue, not whether we can have them or not.
Well, it's, it's a noise issue.
Well, that's, that may be a noise issue, but it's not, it's not.
It's a noise issue.
We don't have any. Never mind. Okay, Bruce, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Nope.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to, to send us to the planning commission for review and recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
You want to, you, something else?
What are you leaving so early for?
Holy hell, we still got like three paintings.
We got a lot to go.
Okay, proposed ordinance number three fifty-eight adopting the updated official map.
So you held a public hearing earlier this evening related to this, and I'm not gonna read through the agenda language again and reiterate what was read at the beginning of the public hearing. I did pull a copy of the proposed official map up on your screen, you also have a copy in your agenda packet. If you have any questions about the map or any facilities that are shown on there, this is the same map that you saw back in November. As was noted earlier, we all, we have done the forty-five day required public comment period and had it reviewed by, uh, the Center County Planning Office as well as the Center Regional Planning Commission. We had no comments from any surrounding municipalities that would be impacted by any of the facilities. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
I have a motion to.
Or this three fifty-eight?
So I have, I have a motion.
What's going on? Do I have a second? I don't know, we're dying over here, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a second. Is there any discussion now on this motion? Does anybody have any comments they want to make?
I was thinking that one time we, we talked about something with Kwood connecting to Oak Hall Park, and that, that's not on here.
That's right here, extension, that's one of the last ones.
Can we go to pink? Extension of, no, expansion of Kwood Park. That, that doesn't link it to anything, that just goes into the dedicated land, and then it doesn't tell anything.
I'm sorry, Dennis, I couldn't hear you over.
Number fifteen says expansion of Kwood Park.
Yes.
Is that expansion, the parkman dedication that's coming from the new twelve acres?
No.
Twelve homes?
That would be to the east, so that would be on an adjacent property between the existing Kwood Park and Rocky Farm Development. So it's, uh, is that Lindell's?
Yeah.
Lindell and that, so if that were to have it developed in the future, you'd have an opportunity to try to negotiate with the developer to get that additional part time.
We still don't have on here a connection from Kwood to Oak Hall Park.
We do not, that was something that had been on the two thousand eight, um.
We're a little on the road down there.
Map, and it was deemed, I think, more or less, looking at it, first off, it was not really deemed feasible to do that based on, you know, previous, uh, attempts, I think, to do so when there was a sewer line extension put down along there. And also, the feedback that we got from the public really emphasized more getting into Bollesburg, I think, knowing that that would allow them to get up to, uh.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna fall, that, that beneficial reuse line was gonna be a makeshift type of like that.
He was supposed to do that, and then he said no.
Huh?
He, he told us at that public meeting, when he was talking about the beneficial reuse line, remember, we were at the fire hall with College Township and their water authority? And he said that he was gonna do that, and then when we went back to him, he said no. And then I sent him the minutes, and he said, no, we're not doing it, so.
That's what he said?
Yes, Mr. Miller said that.
Well, there's, there's two ways to split that, you either go inside the fence or outside the fence. You can't go outside because Penn, that won't give you a right of way. So you jump, jump over the fence into the farmland.
Well, he must already have the right of ways.
Right.
He must already have the right of ways. If he puts, if he puts the sewer line through there.
I believe there's likely easements, I don't know how they.
Easements are right of way.
But I think it was only for underground, I don't think they were allowed to do anything above.
Oh.
That official reuse was due to Oak Hall Park, drilled under 322.
Right.
Did not go into Oak Hall Park directly, there's a height right by the park. Okay, I think we're missing a point if we can't connect Willbrook, Kwood, Rocky Ridge, and the Aston.
Then you can hike all the way through there, Dennis.
That's right. Okay, I'm set, enough said.
Anybody else have any comments they want to make? I have a motion to approve, I need, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, next one. Solar power purchasing agreement.
Well, we have to wake up Mr. Joe. Mr. Joe, are you awake?
The kid's in bed?
No.
All right, do you want me to give a little introduction on this, Frank?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so at the January meeting, the general forum heard an update on the solar power purchasing project. Based on the proposals received to the RFP, or responses received to the RFP, the solar power purchasing, uh, working group has narrowed the selection down to six solar projects that vary in size ranging from eight to twenty megawatts. To determine the final solar project and provide final process pricing, the working group is asking each entity to determine their initial volume commitment by February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, you may remember that in May twenty twenty-two, we indicated, uh, that the township was interested in pledging sixty to one hundred percent of its electricity to solar power. We use eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty kilowatt hours per year, which makes our contribution to the project very minor. Solar power purchasing committee indicated, um, pledging fifty percent will yield lower prices, pledging seventy-five to a hundred percent of our electricity would provide budget uniformity and meet carbon reduction goals. Um, I gave you all the information from the general forum packet and some fact sheets. I know that Joe also wants to talk tonight a little bit about upping our contribution towards the legal side of this project, which will be very minor because it's based on our usage, and our usage, again, is very minor. So with that, Joe is here to answer questions that you have, but we need to come out of this with an idea of what we wanted to pledge towards this project.
Okay, Joe, you want to go first?
I can either start and give a little, uh, nine-second version of Pam's presentation, or you guys can just get going and ask many questions you want, and we can do a Q and A session.
Give me an idea, Joe, of what the other municipalities have gone through in that percent range. Some will have a hundred percent, or someone's through a hundred, but what, what, what are others going to do?
I have not heard too much from around the area. I think Patton was going closer to a hundred percent, but I could be wrong on that. Um, the Borough, um, is going in March, I think College Township's gonna be in the March time frame. Uh, Cog right now is talking the seventy-five percent range. So we seem to be likely in the seventy-five plus percent range at this point in time for the, on the average usage.
We had some very detailed discussions the last two Wednesday meetings, and Amy's been joining me a little because of the complexity of making sure all this flows through, so.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah. Nigel, would you like, do you have anything you want to ask Joe or bring up on this?
Nope.
Bud?
Uh, no, I, well, that, that would come out of here as we, we discussed this at our finance committee at length, uh, I'm not, and, and at the, if, if, I won't talk about the climate action committee later if they had the meeting, and so I'm sure we'll hear it again. My only, so far, that we don't know a lot because there's a lot yet to find out, contract prices, contracts, whoever, who are the bidders are. One thing that, that strikes me is, is a little scary, it's a, it's a fifteen-year contract with additional five, possible five more years and five more years. Uh, that seems to me like a long fifteen years, an awful long to contract to be, tie us up into something like this when five, ten, fifty, we don't know what's gonna happen with the nuclear energy, solar energy, uh, any energy in fifteen years. And I, it seems like we could, if we had like a ten-year or five-year with the five-year extension, it would be more favorable. But I'm just leery of tying the whole region up to a fifteen-year contract to the mercy of one entity to tell us how much we're paying for electricity. That's your only concern. But I have not seen the prices, have not seen the, uh, contracts, don't even know who, I don't even know who's gonna, but, and, where, where the, where, there's gonna be like six, six, uh, fields, there's none of them built yet, we don't even know if, uh, you can even build on one of them. I, I, I think the three in Center County, one has already been turned down, I think. But rather get into the, we'll get into the details this later, but it just seems to me like a little bit scary for tying everything up for fifteen years, telling us what we're gonna pay for, uh, energy.
Can you talk about the interview process, where we are in the Center County versus the one, uh, with the clearing coming?
Down there? Numerous, there's four. Numerous, there's four different sites and that's one of the reasons why we are looking for the pledged amount. So that we can start to compile and know which sites we are targeting because the arrays are different sizes. So, you know, for the price point, Payman mentioned in some of the presentations before um, that even with rounding up, we are expecting the prices to be in the ballpark for one hundred percent solar of, I'm looking at the number exactly here, uh, sixty-eight dollars a kilowatt, a megawatt, um, six point eight cents a kilowatt hour with all costs put into there. Now, there's another thing to think about this too for what Bud had mentioned. And there are a couple of slides in the packet and I can try to share my screen a little bit with, with that. Uh, let me see. Here's a presentation. And you'll have to forgive me for doing it this way. But with it, if you're going, and I don't know if you can see this or not, uh, for the slideshow, the, the large chart, this is one hundred percent solar. So if you choose a hundred percent solar, your costs are likely going to remain very, very fixed across um, the length of the agreement, whether the market prices go up or down, you'll still be paying the same amount. The market price will then be your opportunity cost or your opportunity benefit. You will pay more if prices go down to the fifty, towards the fifty percent lower market than you could have with a lower market rate. And you will pay less if prices would increase towards a fifty percent higher market than you would have if you would have, than, than you would have if you would have kept it in the market. Now, one of the ways to mitigate that market exposure is the next slide, which is a sixty-forty split. And if you look at that sixty-forty split, it should be showing up there. You see how these, because you're only putting sixty percent of your power into the solar portion versus forty percent into the market, you see how these opportunity, opportunity, um, benefit and opportunity cost, um, lines move closer together, minimizing that risk. And that's really, I think, the idea of the discussion for tonight is how closely do you want to be tied to market versus how closely do you want to be tied to a fixed type of cost while noting your stated environmental goals, um, which was developing a strategy to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions as quick, as quickly as feasible. Um, that's pretty much where we are in terms of the discussion. And that's really how you use a slide index between sixty and a hundred percent or even down to zero. If, for what Bud was saying, it just doesn't seem to make sense for the township to be locked up for that extended period of time.
Okay, Bruce, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Um, yeah, I'm sympathetic to Bud's point about being locked in. It seems to me if we pick a reasonable percentage and price of, um, I mean, we're, we're going to get a good deal at current rates. But if we pick a reasonable percentage and the price of solar power or some alternative is, is better in the future, then we can go with that with our remaining percentage. I mean, I'd like to suggest that we go in at two-thirds.
Okay. All right, um, okay, I, I'm going to have to, I, I, I'm, I'm concerned about locking in for the fifteen years. And if, I, I've read this purchase agreement and I've, I've been to the facilities committee, which we discussed at, at lengths. And a couple of things kind of jumped at me. One was, even though we're locked in for fifteen years, those that are going to be negotiating the power are going them on five-year contracts. And I said, oh, does that mean we have to go in and negotiate ours? No, they'll do it for us. So once we sign this agreement, we give up all our negotiating to that group. So it's, and, and again, I don't want to, I, I, I'm not against solar power, but I don't think this contract is, is one that I like. Uh, you know, I, if, if I read it correctly, the only thing that will stay consistent is the solar power part of it. Anything that we don't get up to solar will be, come off of the grid and it will be negotiated off the grid price. So whatever the grid does, we're going to be looking at. That being said, if there's not enough solar power out there to meet all the needs of the region, they're going to have to make it up off the grid. So the guarantee of us being a, a, a lower price all the time, it's not a guarantee and I, and I'm concerned with that. So from my standpoint, I'm not willing to, to, to go take this on right now. I need to see some better guarantees and I don't see them in this, for, for negotiating two some years. I, I don't see a very good deal here. I, I'm, and, and then to lock it in for fifteen years, I'm not happy with that. So that's where I stand on it. Dorothy, I see you have your hand up if you want to say a few things there.
Percent and um, I think there's a reason for that. If you look at what the projected price of electricity is for the future, it is, the prices are going up quite a bit. And this allows us to, to click in a six, six cents a kilowatt hour, which is pretty low for solar power. And so not only would we be doing the right thing in terms of limiting carbon, what we would also be getting less, paying less for our electricity. And I think that's really important. So I'm, just as a citizen, a local citizen, and also as president of the Nittany Valley Environmental Coalition, uh, we are asking you to um, make the choice that lowers carbon. The, the part, the, the solar agreement says that the, the um, solar arrays will be built as part of this. So it's not a matter of not having enough solar. There's, they're going to be built. Um, and I think we should take advantage of that. And the other issue I think no one has been considering is the fact that we're, we've been entered into Reggie by Wolf and Shapiro hasn't made good on that yet, but there's no reason why he won't. And that will make the price of other electricity higher. That is not um, that electricity based on burning carbon. So that should increase the cost of that electricity. So I'll, I'll end there, but I think we would be foolish for many reasons not to go with electricity that is um, based on carbon-free sources. Thank you.
And it's, I can't see, is it Joan? Yeah, Joan, if you have something you want?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me all right?
Sure.
Okay, good. Um, my name is Joan Bouchard and I'm from Patton Township. And I've got a couple of points that I'd like to raise. Um, one of them being that actually the fifteen-year contract is to our advantage because there are many, many reasons why the electricity on the grid will probably go up. Um, our cost according to the one point five percent escalator, if we went a hundred percent uh, with solar, uh, it, it, we know that it's only going to be one point five percent a year. And a fifteen-year trend, looking at large-scale renewable energy projects, um, for instance, the Inflation Reduction Act and other policies of, of our federal government, natural gas exports, the closing of Three Mile Island, um, the invasion of Ukraine influencing today's market and a possible price on carbon will mostly be applying upwards pressure on the electricity market. So from some of the calculations that Peter Buck has done, from which I have taken my remarks, he believes that this actually is to our benefit because we know that our costs can't rise anymore than one point five percent, but we have no idea what's going to happen on the market. And another reason that I think that it's important for us to take, take as close to a hundred percent as we can, as Patton Township did, is that public opinion polls show that solar power is really popular and the citizens want governments um, at all scales to act on climate change. And uh, sixty-six percent of Center County residents were worried in a Yale program survey uh, about climate change. And um, in the Center Region Planning Agency's twenty-twenty-one sustainability survey, over sixty percent of the residents agreed or somewhat agreed that addressing climate change will make our community more sustainable and that it would, um, addressing climate change would be good for our local economy and that making decisions today, um, in making them the policymakers in the community um, should consider scientific projections about what the climate might be like in fifty years. And we know that according to all the science, uh, it is probably going to get warmer. Um, and so it's going to be too late for future generations if we don't make a good this uh, decision right now about committing to um, the type of energy that's green and renewable and getting away from uh, the way that electricity is being produced on the grid right now. Um, and I particularly have an interest in this because my granddaughter is a senior at the state high and everyone over there is really, really concerned about uh, nothing's happening right now to stop climate change. And they feel like it's imperative that we do something to make sure that they have a future and that they are going to be able to, you know, have kids and have their kids grow up in a world that is habitable. So I think also it is, if we went to a hundred percent or close to it, it would be really good in terms of local public policy because Harris Township, like Ferguson and Patton Township in the state college borough, have a net zero or a hundred percent renewable energy uh, targets in their policies. And this is in line with public opinion. They really do want um, us to do something about having uh, something that they can count on. And um, I think that it would be a good thing for us to go for a hundred percent because if we do, and if the other townships and entities do also, they're going to be, build a really big grid. And so we're going to have a large grid to count on. And if we go for like, you know, sixty or seventy percent, we are going to end up buying energy out on the grid because we're not uh, going to have enough solar power. So uh, thank you very much for listening to what I had to say. Um, I'm very happy that you're welcoming citizens from other townships to speak. And I'll let it go with that.
Okay.
And thanks.
And I, and I'm not sure that, none of us are against solar power. It's not that, it's the agreement. It, this is not a good agreement.
Well, I want to clarify something here.
Yeah.
That fifteen-year doesn't guarantee, in that contract, does not guarantee that we're going to pay that. Uh, run number one, there's an escalation clause already built into it, uh, at least one and a half percent annually. It doesn't guarantee that, that they, they can provide that to us. So that's, that's my concern about that long contract. For instance, um, let me, let me, uh, initial contract, the retail provider, the traditional grid electric will be at the group rate. When the contract expires, we'll be our own to negotiate traditions. No. Uh, and it goes on, after the initial contract with the retail provider, can we go to West Penn? No. So we lose our, we lose our bargaining ability by tying into such a long. Now, if something in that contract says that if we can't provide whatever we choose, uh, a solar panel, we can go out and bet our own, but we can't do that. So that, that is my concern about the fifteen-year contract. Now, we haven't seen the contract. Maybe we could write something in that contract that says, look, if they cannot provide solar power to us or they, or something happens and it gets more expensive, which is, mayhem and odd, we should be able to negotiate. That, that is another part, that's, that's down the road and I think that's what we need to look at.
All right, Joe, briefly, go ahead. I'm assuming you want to spot.
Real quickly, there's two separate contracts, just to be clear. There, the retail contract will be three to five years, similar to what you're doing right now. But yes, it'll be with, and we can bid it out every three to five years through the working group and discuss back and forth on there, but you would need to renew that. It'd be a fifteen-year contract for the solar portion. So you've got to look at, this is two different contracts. And to what Bud had said there as well, that is exactly what the legal costs that Amy had referenced earlier before, we're getting, uh, special, we, we had initially thought that the solicitor could handle some of the legal review, but it was deemed the more, the more appropriate way to, to go through that is to go through specialized legal counsel to make sure the contracts are written exactly as you were saying, Bud.
But yeah, to your point though, that we, the, the group would negotiate the retail, we would not. It would be out of our hands, correct?
There would be a recommendation coming back from the group together. So we are basically pulling our usage for the retail portion.
Well, well, just, I heard Bruce, Bruce, and I want to know if you wanted, if you made that a motion, if you said you were going to recommend sixty-six percent and is that a motion that you want to put out?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make, I'll make that motion. Let's, and two-thirds rounds out to sixty-seven percent, just to be dramatic. But um, yeah, I think, I think that gets us in the game. It supports what's a good initiative, but it doesn't lock us in. We can still pursue other non-carbon sources, but it, it maintains some flexibility for us but also supports this uh, important initiative. So I, I, I move that we commit to the third.
I would second that, but isn't, isn't the, aren't they recommending seventy-five percent?
No, that's, that's Cog, Cog was.
Yeah, that's what.
This gentleman has. Cog's recommended seventy-five percent.
This gentleman has.
Hi, uh, Phil Becker, I have a couple of questions. Amy, you said at the beginning it was eight thousand, eighty, how much?
Eighty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty kilowatt hours.
So it's like eight and a half megawatt hours, eighty-five megawatt hours. Eighty-five megawatt hours a year times sixty-eight dollars, that would be your electric bill. Right? So that's the scope of what we're talking about. So fifty thousand dollars? Five thousand dollars?
Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars is the electric bill. And so by going a hundred percent solar, you would reduce the uncertainty for the length of the contract and you would know what that is. And if five thousand dollars is a big number, then it's worth a lot of, of consideration. But if the difference between the five thousand plus the one point five percent escalator that you know you'd be paying over time versus the sixty-forty split or seventy-five split, right? If you want to introduce that market uncertainty for that split, if that's a big enough gap to worry about, you know, it's going to be five hundred, six hundred dollars a year? Is that worth arguing? Or is it worth committing to the stated goal of a hundred percent emissions free?
Okay, I think, I think that we have a motion on the floor. I appreciate.
I'm going to clarify what he's saying. Well, I, I, he says sixty-five, the Senator says seventy-five. I don't know where we're going to end up there.
Well, until we, until we sign the contract, we aren't committed to nothing.
Okay.
All right, so keep that in mind.
The township has stated a goal of going zero percent emission as soon as possible.
We can do that without solar. It's called nuclear. There's no carbon emissions in nuclear power.
That's incorrect.
They, they have them on submarines under the water, trust me.
Factually incorrect.
Uh, we, we're, we're going to, I'm sorry, I know you wanted to say some more, but we want to get this moving because we've got a lot more to go yet tonight. So I have a motion on the, on the table for sixty-seven percent, Bruce, or sixty-five?
Yes.
Sixty-seven. And I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Can I, can I make one?
Any opposed?
Yeah. Dorothy, Blair.
Wait, who was opposed? Nigel and Denny. Bruce, were you in favor?
Yes, three for and two against.
Uh, can Dorothy, she, uh, when you wrote a letter to the township stating that their, their Nittany Valley coalitions stand on that?
There's still need a Dorothy.
I think you're saying yes.
Okay, okay, let's see. Um, repeat your question.
Well, I would like to see, I'd like to see.
I was despondent for a minute there, so I didn't quite hear it all.
I, I would like to see a letter or something from the Nittany Valley, what do you, Nittany Valley?
Barrow.
The Barrow Coalition to the township stating your, your state, your, your stand on that.
Do you want me to write a letter on it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, I, I mean, I, I have to say that, that I feel that going a hundred percent is important. And I know that I don't hear it coming from you guys, so, um, but I will write a letter, yes. Thank you. But you're making up your mind now, aren't you?
No, we really do.
Well, well, we're going.
No, we didn't make our mind up till we signed the contract.
Yeah.
No, we didn't make our mind up until we signed the contract.
We're just saying what we're forwarding right now.
They just want, they want a number right now and, and we're only like less than 1% of the total, so we could say 100, we could say five, we could say 10, it's not going to make a difference.
Okay.
Yeah, very quickly, Joan, we're ready to move on, very quickly.
Calling on me?
Yes, Joan.
Oh, all right. I just want to point out that we're starting out at a below-market rate and that every percent that we put in is going to be putting in at a below-market rate and it is guaranteed 1.5% is going to go up. That's not subject, or at least the way they envision the contract right now, that, that's not going to change. So that's what I wanted to add. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
I do have a statement about my no vote.
Okay, go ahead.
Because I'm in favor of 100% because the amount of money we're talking about is not so much that we can't commit to 100% to push towards our goal of getting carbon free. And now I, just to counter, I personally don't think nuclear power is a good option. There's, so there's my two cents.
Okay. Let's move. Wait, wait, wait. Joe, was there something else we needed to talk about on the legal side, the legal fees?
Quickly, your share will be going up on the legal side. I don't remember, I don't, and I don't have it in front of me, I apologize. Unexpectedly out for a few days, but your share was a few hundred dollars, I believe, and it'll probably be going up to one and a half to two times the amount because we did not anticipate the level of legal services that were going to be needed for this. We thought that it was going to be handled mostly through the solicitors, but we're going to need some specialized legal services to make sure the contracts are written, just as Bud had said, in, in a good way, a favorable deal for the organizations doing this. So stay tuned and we're pulling together the agenda for the SPPA reps, so Denny will be reporting back to you probably at your next meeting about that.
Joe, can our Greens Dyke Consult provide that rather than a solicitor?
He, he was, we, that was one of the places where we got the information about the solicitors from. And the school district is a lead organization in terms of the solicitor managing the project and they have hired a solicitor, or candidly hired a solicitor to move forward with this.
Okay, thanks, Joan.
Are we able to go?
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to hear about this again, right?
Single axle truck body and snowplow purchase.
Township received a grant from the DEP to purchase a new single axle truck to be used for brush collection. The grant will pay 6,000, $69,692 of the purchase. Township will match that grant with $69,692 from the equipment replacement fund. The board previously approved the purchase of a 2023 HV507 chassis from Five Star International for $100,500. Staff is now asking for approval for the purchase of a Bowrock stainless steel dump body for $78,354 and a snowplow and salt spreader for $15,976. The snowplow and the salt spreader are not part of the grant. Township has money in our capital equipment replacement fund to cover the increase in costs, $39,470 for this truck.
Is this to replace a piece of equipment?
No, it's an additional piece of equipment.
We have, we need an additional one?
Yeah, to, it pulls the grapple around when we do brush collection.
We need, but wait, we need, we need a new dump truck with a, with a snowplow?
Yes, because then we can have three single axle trucks on the road when we have bigger storms.
Okay, I guess. All right, I'll, I'll make that, I'll move that.
Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion, close questions or comments? Anybody? Bruce, you got anything?
Nope.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next on the list is this Chantel Cable franchise.
So Chantel Go Fiber is a new cable internet phone provider based in Virginia that is moving into Center County. They intend to build a new system and to offer their services to residents in the county. They recently negotiated franchise agreements with State College Borough and Ferguson Township. College Harris and Patton Townships worked with Bill Fraga from the Cohen Law Group and he's the one we worked with on the Comcast agreement on the draft franchise with Chantel. The franchise, which is the same franchise that State College Borough and Ferguson have, mirrors our existing franchise with Comcast with the exception of how it handles capital support for CNET. The draft franchise proposes a flat fee capital grant for the first four years of the franchise that is based on the number of housing units in each municipality. So basically they're going to pay us a capital grant to CNET without actually having one customer yet in the township.
Oh, is that right?
Yep. Beginning in year three, Chantel will pay an amount equal to 0.17% of the gross revenues received from the operation of the cable system to provide cable services in the township. So that will be based on customers. This fee increases in year five up to a total of 0.25%. The Comcast franchise did not include an initial flat fee payment for CNET. It did include the fee jump from 0.17 to 0.25% at year five. I concluded the draft document for you in the packet. The franchise has been reviewed by the managers from College Harris and Patton and also from Cindy, she was involved in negotiating the first section of that capital grant from CNET. If you're comfortable with the language, we need to set up a public hearing and possible adoption at the March 13th board meeting, understanding that they have to overbuild the Comcast system, their fiber optics, so they're probably going to go underground where they can. So this isn't something that's going to happen tomorrow, but this lays the framework so that they can start doing their surveying.
Does anybody hear from them?
No.
Okay. Because I had a couple of questions on that.
I can try to answer your questions.
Well, I, when I read this, does anybody else have any comments before I go?
I'm interested in that, that flat fee issue, sort of intriguing.
So they're basically going to pay us, so it's going to take them a couple of years to ramp up and start providing services in the township. So they're going to pay us on day one when they start building before they have.
That's okay.
Yeah, before they have a customer, yep.
Physical hold.
The number of housing, yeah, so the number of housing units they're using is the census figure. We have 2,700 housing units in the township. So when they start getting customers then in year three, they're going to pay us 0.17% based on the amount of customers that they have, which is what Comcast does now. Yes.
Anybody else have any, Bruce, any questions or comments?
John, good.
Okay, if, I'll make, I'll make a motion. If Amy was comfortable with the language, move, she said public hearing and possible adoption for March 13th, 2024.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? Can I have a second? Okay, the only, I had, just looking at this, the only thing that I saw there that didn't raise any concern, but I wanted to clarify on, that depending on the distance away, you would have a standard installation fee, but, but it sounds like there'd be a higher installation fee if you were underground. And I know we have a lot of our developments in the township that have underground wiring and I just wanted that clarified, that how much more, is it a lot more, or is it, you know, per?
I, I can ask that question for you.
Yeah, that's, that was what I read.
I know that it's, the way it's set up and the, the language in the franchise, we had a couple of little changes, which Phil hasn't sent the new document to us yet, but one of them was that they negotiated, if you're within 150 feet of the cable plant.
Yes, that's what I read.
Yes. So if you're within 150 feet, they'll serve you at no charge. If you're beyond 150 feet, they deduct, say you're 300 feet, they deduct them from the cable plant, their cables, line, their line.
The main line.
Their main line, or the underground line.
Which would be the telephone pole because they, they come in through the pole.
Right, but this is, they're going to go underground.
Yeah.
The phone system is underground?
They're coming underground to your house?
Some of it will be underground, yes, some of it will be. So anyway, if you're 300 feet away, you get the first 150 on Chantel and then you have to pay the next 150 to hook up yourself. And there's a fee that they set up, they have a fee schedule and they tell you upfront and that's one of the things the franchise talks about. In Comcast, it's 125 feet, but they have to tell you what that fee is upfront and then they can't change the fee on you.
All right. All right. That was one of the things I had on. Okay. Any questions? Oh, we already have that, we have a motion.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Resolution 2303 authorizing instruction of specific township records.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, go ahead.
Is this a contract of service?
Uh, yes, we use a shredding company that costs us $100 a year.
We don't do it.
No. They have to give us a certificate.
We hope not make scissors.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed. Okay, we're good. All right, Amy, you're up.
Okay, so just a couple of things. Frank and I are meeting with Senator Dush to talk about the State College Area Connector Project and our concerns with it. I can also try to set up a meeting with the new Secretary of Transportation, we have a contact through John Brenner at the municipal league. We are getting ready to set up interviews for the labor position. We had 35 resumes come in, so we're really pleased with that. We had some good applicants. And lastly, we're out digging in, oh, actually not lastly, we're out digging in the parks, so if you see us in Nittany View, or not Nittany View, Harpster Park and over in Country Place, we're doing some pathway work and also taking down some dead trees. And then one last thing, I got a letter from Mayor Will Stevens from Murphysboro, Illinois, seeking a letter of support for a 2026 commemorative stamp in honor of John A. Logan. Senator Logan founded Memorial Day as a national holiday in 1868 and was born in Murphysboro. So if you'd like to provide such a letter.
That, that is 100% false statement.
As long as he verifies that where the, where they were originally.
Exactly. That's a 100% false statement.
He also had the date wrong of when our memorial, their first celebration was.
Well, it didn't say ours, it says his.
The third one, uh.
New York.
Waterloo.
Waterloo.
We, we, we give, we beat them by at least four years, so.
His, his letter said, oh, you had your first one July 4th, 1865, and I was like, October 4th, 1864.
Interestingly, that Murphysboro is seven miles from Compton, I don't know where that is.
I think we sent him a letter that his information is incorrect.
That we are the, we are the birthplace and go away.
Can you send that letter?
Put that on the stamp.
I will write a nice.
Put that on the stamp.
I will write a nice.
We are the birthplace, so don't deal with it.
This is a citation to our service of Memorial Day.
Oh, that's a good one.
Okay, excellent, excellent.
Okay, I don't have anything else.
Okay, next, Prue Will Vouchers.
So moved.
Anybody have any questions, Frank? I didn't think so.
Prue Will Vouchers, the number five issue.
What's that?
Triathlon?
Yes.
Interestingly, the young gentleman that's been hired locally to run that.
Josh, yeah.
Is, lives in Harris Township?
Lives on Tressler Street.
Yeah, and his father lives in West Penn.
Yeah, and he works for the Y, he's good people.
Yeah, nice guy.
Who is it?
Josh Cone.
Jus?
Josh Cone.
Cone, oh, okay.
His father was a giant, so I know him.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the vouchers?
So moved. Let me tell you how much.
I have a second.
Tell us how much they are, Frank.
Oh my goodness. We're going to approve voucher number 2023-01 and the amount 172,237.76. I got a motion from Bud. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, now we'll look at the committee reports and we're going to fly through these little bad boys. Executive Committee, the only, everything was done at the meeting. The only thing that I had to comment on is I did make a comment to the chair that we have certain board members, cog members that are abusing, how should I say it, their position and how long they're talking and interrupting. And I said, we need to either write a letter or we should have something because we have all those cog etiquettes that we passed and the, and the thing that if we don't enforce them, they don't mean anything.
And just as a matter of record, it wasn't me.
No, it wasn't you.
Oh, God.
So anyway, that's all that happened there, other than what you saw at that meeting. At the facilities committee, we talked about what we just did, the solar power purchasing agreement, and we got it from top to bottom for two and a half hours. And then we had the long-range planning, setting priorities, and I keep bringing it up into meeting. All we want to talk about is how we can, we have all these models of how we should be doing everything and we've got all these assessments sitting that we aren't doing anything with, we aren't coming up with numbers, we just want to talk about this. And I said, we need to have some work, workdays and we need to get started on this, you know, and I'm not sure how that's going, but I've made that comment the last two meetings. Connector report, again, we're supposed to get this Pell study any day now from what they're telling me, but I haven't seen it yet. An MPO doesn't meet till the end of the month. Parks Capital.
We're going to meet in April.
Okay. Parks Governance.
We canceled our meeting due to the weather.
Okay. Center Region Park Authority.
We approved some change orders, all within the expected amounts, so nothing unusual, nothing unexpected. And, well, that's the main item. It's, it's all, it's all going smoothly.
Okay. All right, Public Safety Committee.
First thing we did, we recommended the executive committee to forward to the general forum the agreement between Center Region and Penn State for the emergency management agreement. There were a few items that didn't deal with Harris Township at all, so I'm not going to bother you with them. This one's kind of interesting, they've, they've purchased a new software, a threat ID thing. It's a, it's a material analyzer, not a public safety committee, you know, anyway, so I'm kind of surprised, I guess that comes out of the fire company budget.
Oh, you mean that, it's a, it's a, it's an analyzer, kind of analyzer for hazmat materials, it goes to the hazmat team.
Yeah. Hazmat got what they charge.
Yeah, for some reason, we're in the emergency management, for some reason we're supposed to abstain from that.
Because it's coming out of the fire budget.
That's fire management, yes.
Anyway. And we did discuss the position that, well, something that fire company would, oh, special operations assistant chief, capped on a part-time equipment technician's job description, which we actually did in HR committee as well. So that was that. Excuse me a minute, I'm pulling this agenda stuff right off my phone to see what we did. So I finally got myself back out of the chairmanship of the HR committee. Again, it's hard. I've been trying to get that open years, ended up landing, but to the end of last year. Yeah, we went through the basic housekeeping things and, well, we did approve the 2023 salary schedule and included a 5% tolla and, and I think up to 2% merit, I believe, but I think that was separate, salary scale was separate, so that's, that's a 5% tolla that they're getting and then, yes, we approved those job descriptions, which I just talked about. That's it.
Lucy.
We had two items, we did a discussion of the 537 sewage facility plan special study that Calderway and Aston Street Steward may be replacement, which is a major job that starts at about the Alpha Fire Station and runs the length of Calderway and will occur over the span of about two and a half years from a rather small pipe or something in the 18 and 24 inch size, so there's going to be a major construction in, in the alley. And the other item was a follow-up on this document, if anyone remembers seeing that. We distributed that and I ran into it this year and it talks about projections, population projection from 2003 to 2030. So I called Mark and I said, can you, can you give us an update? We're in 2022. So what they produced was this document.
Oh.
And it has interesting updates with respect to what we were successful at and what we failed. We did not reach the population projection that they had taught about 2022, so.
Not as terrific as we thought we were.
Yeah. Take, take a look at this, interesting stuff, we, we're going to try to get it to the general forum because it's, it's something all the people should know about.
Okay. And. Go ahead with solar.
We, we just talked about that.
Okay. All right, Bud, Finance.
Financial committee, we met, uh, last week. Uh, we generally are in discussions now, no, no, uh, financial decisions to be made. We did talk about moving the program, the program up a little bit, a couple of weeks, starting earlier, so that it fits more with the municipal budgets, so that they can, although, and, um, they're all, it's always the same amount, pretty much, but they were going to move a couple of weeks ahead. Uh, we, they projected some, some, uh, increases, and Joe Vigilante gave some very good, uh, uh, but coldness and expenses, and, and we projected the expenses to go up seven and a half to eight percent this year across the board. And that is not, and that is not meeting any of our, our, uh, capital projects. So, it, it's going to be an interesting budget year. I think the bottom line is we, we got it down last year, maybe artificially low, so we may have a little bit of, um, re, rethinking to do when it comes to this year's budget. Uh, that's it. Climate Action, uh, it was today, and it slipped me by, and I've, I got a notice that if I didn't sign in, there wouldn't have a quorum, and I was already committed, so. I don't know if they actually met or not, but they're going to talk about the solar power purchasing. And Dennis, I, we're going through this, uh, contract with, with recycling and this whole thing. So, if it's okay with you, I'm going to forward. Yeah, the, the, the Refuge Contact. And, uh, since you've, but you've done this before, I'm going to forward information to you. I didn't, and then you can look at it and advise me on whether it's, what it is or not, because.
Might be a conflict, because I now chair the authority, so.
I can help, I can help.
Okay, well, maybe we can, okay, because I, I'm, I'm not really clear. I've not done it before. It's, it's, we're, we're doing a survey right now, so I guess I will channel that to Amy, and then Amy can use you as a.
Survey part of that?
Well, the survey, and then we're going to do the contract and the whole bit, but.
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to use Amy to use you as advice on that.
Yep.
Okay.
I've done survey, so.
Okay, negotiate. And the Bolzberg His Museum is, we, with the power struggle in Bolzberg, between the Conservancy and everything else, the Bolzberg Harris Museum is now in charge of the Memorial Day, sir, graveside services on Sunday. We're going to be doing that, and, um, we are, we've got a couple of things planned. We're still going to do a, um, a, uh, high tea. Not what a high tea is, we make money on that, I guess. Uh, uh, they don't, I'm not sure how it will work out for me, but, but we're going to do some nice things. We've got a very good board. Heather Ricker is doing an excellent job. Doctor and Mrs. Nydigger are doing excellent. Everybody on that board is, is really, really good, so you'll see a lot of, a lot of good things from out of the Bolzberg Harris Museum.
Any final comments by anybody?
Start signing.
Bruce, you want to do the honors? Because I know you want happy hour.
He's unhappy.
Hey. All right, um, let's see here. I'm just going to do something here. I move on.